This is a public hearing, and we are the Putnam County Planning Commission. We're the designated local planning agency for the county as described under Title 11, Chapter 163 of the Florida statutes, and we function under the authority of Article 11 and 12 of the Putnam County Land Development Code. The primary responsibility of the commission is to serve as an advisory body to hear and make recommendations to the Board of County Commissioners on matters related to provisions of and proposed amendments to the Putnam County Comprehensive Plan. The members of this committee will review each case and each application and make a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners. I will give you the dates that those will go before the County Commission as we do the cases. Procedurally, we will call each case by name and number. A member of staff will then briefly explain to us the nature of each request. We will take comments from the applicant or their representative, followed by any public comments concerning the request. Everyone wishing to speak will have an opportunity to speak. Three minutes will be allocated to each person that wants to present their opinions or concerns to the Board. Please direct all comments or statements to the commission and not to other members in the audience. Before speaking, we will ask you to come before the podium and give us your name and address. After all persons wishing to speak have been heard, we will entertain a motion from the commission. This motion will be voted on by the commission members and become our recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners. The Board of County Commissioners will make final determinations regarding applications on different dates. It's either going to be on January 23 or January 9, and I will tell you as we come up with each case what day they're going to be heard. As members of the Putnam County Planning Commission, we pledge to come to meetings fully prepared to hear and take action based on the facts of the cases as presented. We further agree to listen to each presentation with an open mind and objectively evaluate each case as it relates to the goals and objectives of the Putnam County Comprehensive Plan and the policies of the Putnam County Land Development Code. Also, we agree that as a member of this commission, we will respect each other, the staff and members of the public who testify for and against each and exercise courtesy and respect to all who are here today. We will refrain from unnecessary interruptions, and we agree to avoid ex parte communication and to freely declare those and all conflicts of interest. At this time, I would like to ask members of the Board if you've had any conflicts of interest, if any of you have any conflict of interest. Has anyone had ex parte communication on this case?
No.
Mr. Schoen?
No.
Okay. In that case, we will hear PSA 23-00001. I'll turn it over to you, ma'am, Ms. Gazelle.
Thank you, Jennifer Gazelle, for the record, Planning and Development Services. This application is a Type 1 subdivision replat. The applicant is Tim and Darlene Smith. The subject property is located at 137 Pierce Lane, East in Palaca. The parcel identification number is 0610-2702-120000002. A 911 address will be assigned to each of the proposed lots once the final plat is approved. The subject parcel is approximately 5.77 acres. Future land use is rural residential. Zoning is residential state. The applicant requests preliminary and final plat approval for the addition of four lots resulting in a proposed eight-lot residential subdivision. The subject parcel to be further divided, which will encompass approximately 5.77 acres, comprises Lot 2 of the azaleas on the St. John's platted subdivision. The subdivision was recorded in Mapbook 6, Page 80, on November 21, 2002. All lots within the subdivision are accessed by a 50-foot-wide paved private road and includes drainage improvements. The subdivision is within the rural residential future land use designation and maintains a residential state zoning designation. The applicant is requesting a replat of Lot 2 to create four additional lots, 2A, 2B, 2C, and 2D, ranging between 1.6 acres and to 1.79 acres. The resulting residential density is one dwelling unit per 1.44 acres. We have our aerial view, zoning, future land use, the proposed plat. The proposed re-subdivision of Lot 2 will result in a residential density of one dwelling per 1.44 acres. The lands affected by the replat are within the rural residential future land use category and are adjacent to and accessed by a private road and are not within a military restriction overlay zone. Ordinance 2005-18 was approved by the Putnam County Board of County Commissioners on April 26, 2005, amending portions of the Land Development Code governing allowed use in the zoning district and dimensional requirements. Among other land development regulations, the subject subdivision was approved prior to the implementation of certain regulations governing subdivisions. However, the subject plat does adhere to all current regulations. The request is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Putnam County Comprehensive Plan, is compatible with surrounding zoning and uses, and is consistent with the requirements of the Putnam County Land Development Code. Staff recommends approval of the request for the preliminary and final plat approval for the replat of Lot 2 of the azaleas on the St. John's. Recorded subdivision for the creation of four new lots, 2A, 2B, 2C, and 2D, resulting in an eight-lot subdivision.
Any questions of staff? Hearing none, we'll move on. Is the applicant or the applicant's agent here? Would you like to speak, sir? Please come forward and give us your name and address.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the Planning Commission. My name is Tim Smith, and I reside at 123 Pierce Lane in East Palaca. I think this is pretty straightforward. It's a lot like the headline story in the Palaca Daily News today about families having property and want to transfer some of that to other family members for their homesites. And so with me is my sister Lucy and her husband Bud Broski, and they live on the west end of that property up close to East River Road. And I live on the, I'm sorry, I live on the west property at the river, I got to get this right. And they live on the east side of the property at East River Road. And between that, between them and us, is the 5.77 acre. When my wife and I, Darlene, platted this in 2023, that 5.7 acres was a horse pasture. And so now, years later, I have two children, and they have two daughters, that all have expressed interest, and they would like to live by their parents. And so me, as an elderly parent, look forward to opportunity for my children to live close to us and to also be by grandchildren. So this really is kind of a family effort. There are two other lots out of that eight that are privately owned by others, but if this goes forward, six of the eight will be family members from the Smith family descendants. So that's our request, and we thank you. And if you have any questions, I'd be glad to come up and answer them.
Any questions of the applicant? Thank you, Mr. Smith. Appreciate your being here.
Thank you.
Okay. Any people in the audience wishing to speak, either for or against this particular case? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing portion of this meeting and bring this back to the commission for deliberation and vote. Do we have any comments or questions from the commission?
I don't really have any comments. I mean, any questions, I'm just going to recommend that we approve PSA 23-00001 as it is consistent with our comprehensive plan.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. Is there any further comment or question? I just have one comment, and this is not being crude or crude or anything, but Mr. Hafner, are you within the 300 feet?
My way.
Are you within the 300 feet of this?
I certainly am.
That would create a conflict of interest, would it not, Mr. Perry?
You'll have to explain that to me in a little bit more detail, if you don't mind.
Now, you live within the 300 feet of this property, right?
Yeah, my property borders the, their north border of the orange property.
Does that create a conflict of interest?
I don't think it does.
Oh, okay. Just wanted to make sure it's on record that you live with.
I'll second.
What would you second?
So that second, if there's three conflict of interest.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hancock. Any further discussion? Okay. Hearing that, we'll call for the question. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Chair votes aye. Anyone saying no? This case will go before the Board of County Commissioners on January 23, probably shortly after 9:00 a.m. in the morning, and.
Madam Chair, I would like to say thank you to the county staff.
Would you come to the microphone, because this is a recorded meeting? Not to worry.
I would like to thank Mr. Baker and his staff. They were very accommodating over the year and a half that I've been having this discussion with them about how to move forward and what's the best way to do that for the protection of that land, and I want to thank them personally.
Thank you, sir. It's always good to hear compliments of staff, and we'll second that motion, that idea, because we appreciate them, too. Okay, moving forward. Get my agenda out here. We have case REZ 23-00009. You're up again?
This application is for a zoning map amendment from commercial retail C2 to commercial intensive C4. The applicant is John Vanderworth. Property is located at 3847 Reed Street in Palaca. Subject parcel is approximately 1.15 acres. Future land use is urban service. Zoning is commercial retail C2. Proposal is to amend the zoning map to allow for a diesel mechanic shop. The 1.15 acre parcel is within the urban service future land use designation and is currently developed with a repair shop, however, it's unoccupied. The parcel is located in a portion of the corridor where commercial development has occurred on lands that also maintain a commercial and urban service future land use classification. The surrounding areas are mostly commercial, retail C2, commercial intensive C4, and industrial light IL City of Palaca M1. Some aerial view, zoning, future land use. The current zoning designation of commercial retail C2 does not allow for a diesel mechanic shop. Rezoning to the commercial intensive C4 zoning designation would allow for a diesel mechanic shop, heavy vehicle sales, service, and repair, or heavy equipment sales, service, and repair. The proposed rezoning is compatible with the surrounding uses and would be compatible with the future land use designations and zoning designations within the surrounding area. Staff finds that the proposed rezoning from C2 to C4 is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the adopted Comprehensive Plan, is allowed in the adopted future land use categories, and is not anticipated to adversely affect the orderly development of the adjacent and surrounding properties, as the property is subject to the development standards of the Land Development Code and meets the locational requirements of the C4 zoning district provided in the LDC and Comprehensive Plan. Staff recommends approval of this request to amend the zoning map from C2 to C4.
Thank you, Madam. Thank you very much. Is there any one on the board that has a question of staff? Okay. I do need to ask on each case, is there, has there been any ex parte communication? And Mr. Perry, would you please give a quick thumbnail of what ex parte communication includes?
Certainly, Madam Chair. It would be anything, any conversations that you've had, a board member has had with a member of the public, in particular, the person that's bringing the petition, then that ex parte communication can be in the form of an email, it can be in the form of a letter, telephone call, it doesn't have to be face-to-face or anything like that. And the substance of the conversation has to do with whatever the petition's dealing with. Is that clear?
Okay. Everybody clean with that? We've got to be very cautious on ex parte communication, and it's okay to have it, but you've got to report it and you've got to declare it. With that in mind, is the applicant for case number 2309 here? Would you like to address the board? Please come forward, give us your name and address.
Hello, I'm Jeff Passno. Live at 614 River Street. I'm representing.
Excuse me, you're representing?
Yes, John Vanderworth.
Okay. Go ahead.
And I'm just here if anybody has any questions.
Okay. Are there any questions of the applicant's agent?
I do have one question. Is the applicant here?
No, he's in Portland, Oregon.
Are you, you know that?
My only concern is the recapture of any oil.
I can't quite hear you. I can hear that.
My question is.
Nope. Closer.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
My question is the recapture of any oil or spillage. That's a very small lot, and it's possible, if they're doing the work on a concrete surface, they can have stuff go into a holding tank and be pumped out.
Will the potential, the guy who would be running the business is here, he can answer that, but it's all concrete inside.
And all the work's going to be inside.
I can't answer that.
Okay. If the manager of this particular business is here, could you come up and join? First, give us your name and address.
My name's William Adams, 118 Magnolia Avenue, Crescent City. There's a lot of regulations EPA has for oil disposal and everything, double containers, and, you know, there's a lot of protocol that goes on that, so it wouldn't be going out into the environment.
Yeah, as long as it's on the concrete and you've got some kind of.
You have to use a.
Recapture.
Contaminant, yep.
Yes. That's my only concern.
Yep.
Okay. Are there any questions of the applicant's agent or the manager of the business? Okay, hearing none, I'll say we're fine, and Jeff, you have nothing else you need to add?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. I'll now bring it back to the board for consideration and/or motion.
Public comments.
Public comments. I'm sorry. Are there any other public comments? Okay. Now I'll bring it back to staff, to the board. Still a little confused today. Bring it back to the board for consideration and/or motion.
Madam Chair, I approve REZ 23-00009 as it is consistent with the goals and objectives and policies of the Putnam County Comprehensive Plan.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second for this. Is there any discussion by the board? Okay. That case, I'll call for the question. All in favor of this case? Hmm? The quote, vote, yeah, the question, the vote. I would like to ask, is all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Anyone opposed? Thank you very much. This case will be heard by the Board of County Commissioners on January 23, and that again will probably be shortly after 9:00 a.m., and this kind of, this hearing will take place, the same thing will take place that day. So thank you very much for being here, and if you want to, you can leave, but we'd love to have you stay for the duration of the meeting. Okay, the next case is REZ 23-010. And staff, are you ready again?
This application is for a zoning map amendment from commercial C2 to commercial intensive C4. Applicant is Colton Florida Estate LLC, John Colton Jr. Agent is John Bruce. The property is located at 1370 North Highway 17 in Palaca, consisting of two parcels. The two subject parcels combined are approximately 10.26 acres. Future land use is commercial. Zoning is commercial retail C2. Proposal is to amend the zoning map to allow a clearing contractor yard and heavy equipment storage and repair. Parcel 13-08-26-0000-0030-0000 is 6.39 acres and has approximately 635 feet of frontage on Highway 17, and is currently improved with a 4,000-square-foot warehouse. The second parcel ending in 0030 is 3.87 acres and has approximately 212 feet of frontage on Highway 17 and is currently vacant. The parcel is located in a portion of the corridor where commercial development has occurred on lands that have maintained a commercial future use classification. The surrounding zoning designations are commercial and agricultural, and the surrounding future land uses are commercial, industrial, commercial, and agricultural. The majority of those lands are vacant or contain a passive use like communication towers. Aerial, zoning, future land use. Current zoning designation of commercial retail C2 does not allow for heavy equipment service and repair. Rezoning to the commercial intense C4 zoning designation would allow heavy equipment service and repair. The proposed rezoning is compatible with the surrounding uses and would be compatible with the future land use designations and zoning designation with the surrounding area. Staff finds that the proposed rezoning from C2 to C4 is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the adopted Comprehensive Plan, is allowed in the adopted future land use categories, is not anticipated to adversely affect the orderly development of the adjacent and surrounding properties, as the property is subject to the development standards of the Land Development Code and meets the locational requirements of the C4 zoning district provided in the LDC and the Comprehensive Plan. Staff recommends approval of the request to amend the zoning map from C2 to C4.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions of staff? Okay, is the applicant or the applicant's agent present? Please come forward and state your name and address.
My name's John Bruce, and I've been working with Mr. Colton and Loving Construction.
Could you give us your address, please?
Say again?
Your address.
Oh, I live in Palm, 96 Prince Eric Lane in Palm Coast, Florida.
Thank you.
Yeah, I've been working with Mr. Colton and Loving Construction, and Loving was trying, they do construction work in South Florida, in Florida here, and they were looking for a yard, and we found this place, and it was scheduled for C4, C2, and we wanted to go to C4 so we could put our equipment on the lot. So I appreciate your time for this. Okay, thank you.
Any questions of the applicant's agent?
Same question as I had for the last one. It says you're going to do work on equipment?
Yes, we'll be doing some work, mostly storage yard, mostly storage stuff there, but there's a building there, and we will take care of the oil and stuff at that time.
That's the only thing I got. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Anybody else wishing to speak for or against this particular case? Hearing none, I will bring it back to the board and close the public hearing portion of this meeting for that, and I'll bring it back to the board for any comments, questions, Do I hear a motion? Do I hear a motion?
I just have a question for Zach, if you don't mind. Uh, this is not your case or for the other lady. It's more of a general question than specific to this, but I'm just looking, I know we just approved another one for C4, but this is a substantially bigger site, and I'm just looking at all these other uses that fall under C4. Is it not appropriate to have a PUD in this case for what they want? If you can just educate me. I think it's not because it's already an allowed use under a C4, you know, this zoning, so we wouldn't do a putt in that case, but I'm just asking.
Yes, ma'am, that is correct. Because it's an allowed use in one of the specified zoning districts we have, PUD kind of would be overkill here. PUDs are implemented for site-specific zoning or very unique developments that don't fit into one zoning district.
Were you thinking a PUD would be-
Yeah.
Were you thinking a PUD would designate this as only for that particular activity?
That's what, that's what I was getting at, yes.
Okay. Any other questions of staff? Any discussion amongst the board? All right, now I'm going to call for a motion.
I'll make the motion to approve REZ 23-00010 as it is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Putnam County Comprehensive Plan.
I'll second.
Okay. Now, any further discussion? All right, hearing none, I'll call the vote. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, anyone against? Thank you very much. This will go on to the Board of County Commissioners. There will be two readings on this particular case. The first will be on January 23rd. So thank you very much. All right, this time I will call for case REZ 000013. I see Mr. Baker is up.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For the record, Zachary Baker, Planning and Development Services. This is a rezone request. The petition is to change the zoning map from residential 2 to public use light. The applicant is Putnam County, Florida. Subject property is located on Magnolia Trail. A 911 address has not been assigned. Parcel ID is 361026, string of zeros, string of zeros, 0002. Subject parcel is approximately 2.88 acres, rural residential land use, and currently is zoned R2, residential 2. The requested rezoning is to allow for development of a public boat ramp and parking facilities. So the, the subject parcel is the product of a lot split by deed. The Florida Department of Transportation conveyed the subject parcel to Putnam County, retaining a portion of that parcel along U.S. Highway 17 for road infrastructure. Prior to FDOT ownership, the property appeared to have been used as a non-conforming mobile home park based on aerial photography or aerial imagery. Proposed boat ramp will be for public use and is not associated with commercial development, nor does it provide transitional zoning for commercial uses to establish. Staff does not consider this to be urban sprawl. Here we have an aerial image. You can see that the Shadrick or Dunn's Creek unrecorded subdivision is lying around the proposed parcel. Currently, everything around it is zoned residential 2. And again, the future land use is rural residential. The current rural residential future land use map designation specifically allows activity and resource-based recreational uses as well as community facilities and services. The proposed zoning map amendment is compatible with surrounding uses. The surrounding land use is rural residential, intended to allow for residential, limited commercial, recreational, and community facility development. All surrounding properties are residential or vacant with residential or agricultural zoning designations. Staff finds that the proposed rezoning from R2 to P1 is consistent with the goals, objectives, policies of the adopted comprehensive plan, is allowed in the assigned future land use category, and meets the locational requirements of the P1 zoning district provided in the Land Development Code. Staff recommends approval of the request to amend the zoning map from R2 to P1.
Any questions of staff? Okay, hearing none. Is the, is the agent of the owner here? Come forward, please.
Julian Young, Deputy County Administrator, Putnam County Board of County Commissioners. I am the agent representing the proposed rezoning today. The Board of County Commissioners acquired this property from FDOT with the purposes of expanding our boat ramp opportunities. It is aligned with our recreational use, and any questions that you may have of me, I'm happy to answer.
Any questions of Ms. Young? Hearing none, thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak for or against this particular application? I have one. Tab Whitehead? Please come forward, give us your name and address, and tell us what you need us to know.
My name is Tab Whitehead. I live at 215 Hickory Nut Trail, Satsuma, Florida. I own a lot adjoining said property, 73 North Dunn's Creek Road, where I dock my boat and have a little plot of land. I do not believe this launch is a good thing, as bad as I want a boat launch in the area because I really think we need one, and I'd love to see one, but the water is very shallow there. Where they're going to have the launch, my boat draws 18 inches, and I run aground trying to go up towards, you know, creek that way at low tide. Also, it's very narrow. There's maybe 30 feet between where my boat is docked and my neighbor's, you know, property, you know, where boats can go through, and I, I just don't believe that, you know, the area is good. Also, when I go through the canal, there's spots where there's logs and trees and so forth. My rudder on my boat, which goes down about two and a half feet, it's kicked up a couple times and went into my motor and, you know, caused issues there. So I'm afraid, you know, at low tides and so forth, that the depth would not, you know, support the type of, you know, vessels that would be launched there that would draw, you know, water, and, you know, they might get damaged or such. Also, it's just such a narrow canal, there's not a whole lot of parking or area there, you know, consistent. I would love, like I say, to see a boat launch there, I just don't think that's, you know, that's the spot. I think there's got to be better areas in the, like, maybe across the river, where I believe the county owns some property there that's a lot bigger. That would be a better, you know, place as far as parking goes and for a boat ramp. When I go to the boat ramp over in Palaca, it's very crowded, it's hard to get parking and so forth there, and there's a lot more room at the, you know, city boat ramp. I'm afraid this boat ramp, you know, would just get overrun, you know, with people because there's a lot of people with boats in the area and a lot of people that want to launch their boats, but I just don't think there's enough, you know, room to accommodate, you know, the amount of traffic and the boats that would be going through there. I just don't think it would be good, and I don't think the tide and the water level there, you know, is good. And plus, there's trees and so forth, you know, in that area that would be a hindrance to the construction in the area there.
Thank you, sir. Does staff have an answer to that question, or Ms. Youngs, you want to come up and address that?
Chairman, I'm happy to address anything, although I'm not certain there was a clear question in that-
Thinking, he's questioning the depth of the water there and tidal variances?
Sure. Well, we just acquired the property, and rezoning obviously is step two. As any public facility will be deemed, it would be designed by a design professional architect, and Army Corps would be involved as well as the water management. So draft and dredge and all of those things as far as, as far as properly launching a boat will, will be considered as part of a public project.
Okay. Thank you. Any other people in the audience who'd like to speak either for or against this particular case? Yes, sir, please come forward and give us your name and address, and after you speak, would you please fill out one of the blue cards?
Hello, my name's Dan Glover. I live at 104 Magnolia Trail, directly across from the, the proposed change that's taking place. I'm concerned about the increase in traffic. The, the road is dirt right now, and people are forced to slow down sometimes, but if they pave that road, it's going to be like Daytona 500, people just racing up and down that road. Another one of my concerns is, right now, a lot of cats come from the woods over there. People are dumping them off, and if this is put in, it's going to increase 10 times. It's going to be just, people, people go places like that and dump their animals, unfortunately, and then they come out, and I feel bad for them, and so I have to feed them, but that's another one of my concerns. I just don't think it's a real good idea to put in, there's a boat launch just across the way down on Butler Road, Georgie Boys. It's like seven bucks to launch your boat, so there's one in the area. It's not like there's not any there, but I just don't like the idea of the increased traffic. And also, I understand they're talking about taking down a row of trees. There's a row of trees there along Magnolia Trail. It kind of buffers the highway right now. If they were to take out that row of trees, we're just going to get all the noise from the highway. We still get a lot of noise, but the trees kind of buffer it, and they're nice. It's nice to have trees down there. It's called Magnolia Trail. And if they take those out, it's just going to be like, you know, parking lot, and, but that's my main concerns, I guess. So thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak either for or against this particular case?
Madam Chair, may I address the concerns-
Yes.
-of this individual? So as far as the traffic goes, during the staff report, we reviewed the ITE Trip Generation Manual for public parks. You're looking at a range of .7 trips per day on a weekday to 2.8, 2.08 trips per day on a weekend. Of course, with the seasonal changes, weather, you, you would see some variation there. So the trips per day, it's anticipated that it's going to be pretty low. Again, with the size of the property, you're not going to be able to get a huge amount of boats coming through with parking restrictions. And then also, to address the buffer, we have specific requirements in the Land Development Code that require, you know, buffering, so any of those vegetation that's currently there, county will have to keep that vegetation to provide that buffer.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Ms. Youngs, did you have anything else you wanted to add? Okay, thank you. Anyone else in the audience wanting to speak either for or against this particular case? Okay, hearing none, I will bring it back to the board for consideration, discussion, and vote.
Madam Chair, please don't forget the ex parte-
Thank you, sir. Was there any ex parte communication concerning this particular case?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Does anyone have a conflict of interest?
Pardon?
Does anyone have a conflict-
Anyone have a conflict of interest?
I own property, but I don't know if it's close enough. It's on 17.
Okay.
It doesn't affect me, anyway.
Okay, just let the record show that Mr. Schwing does own property in that area. Anything else? Yes, ma'am.
Personally, I think it's a good, good point.
Want to turn your mic on and say that again?
I said, I said I think this is a good place for a recreational area to be used, personally.
So I'm going to make a motion to approve rezoning application 23-00013 as it is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Putnam County Comprehensive Plan.
Thank you. Who was the second, Chris? Stanley, okay. All right, we have a motion by Ms. Fortner and a second by Mr. Hodge. Any other questions or comments or concerns on this? All right, I'm, I'm glad we're getting another boat ramp in South Putnam, because there are few and far between there. Anywhere on our waterways are good, so you're right. All right, hearing nothing else, I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. All right, this case will be heard, where'd you put it? On January 9th. So, the county commissioner will hear this case just as we did, on January the 9th. Our next case is PUD 23-000007. Mr. Baker?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, for the record, Zachary Baker, Planning and Development Services. This is an application to amend the Putnam County zoning map from commercial neighborhood C1 to planned unit development, PUD. The applicant is Robert and Margaret Mara. The property is located at 130 Smith Lane in Crescent City. Parcel is approximately 2.8 acres. Future land use is rural residential. Zoning is currently C1. Desire to change to PUD. The reason for the amend, or the requested amendment is to reestablish the fish camp that was historically located on site. So historically, this parcel was a fish camp on Crescent Lake dating back to at least 1975. The property owners seek to revamp and run it as a fish camp once again. Putnam County Property Tax Appraiser shows an existing 21 total metered pads with private water and private septic connections, one residence and one retail store. The property owner intends to develop 15 of the existing pads and build a new owner's residence as well as a retail store with accessory uses such as bathhouse, snack bar, laundry room, storage shed, covered pavilion, and a storage area for trucks and boats. The proposed use is to decrease, uh, excuse me, the proposed use is a decrease in intensity from what was previously occupying the lands subject to this application. In 2001, 21 of the sites were vested, so the use was vested. However, the fish camp has been unoccupied since 2012. That use that was vested ceased to exist. Here we have an aerial image of the, of the parcel. The current zoning, you can see everything around it is residential 2. Future land use is rural residential. So this is something that we got, we actually obtained it from the Florida Department of Health. This is a site plan from 1975, and it was required for a change of ownership, which kind of leads to the fact that it may have existed prior to 1975, but this was the oldest document that we could find. This is what the applicant is proposing. So it's a very similar layout, utilizing the same utilities that are on site, well, not the same ones, but same location and same setup that, that has been there historically. The current zoning designation does not allow for overnight recreation. Land Development Code Section 45196B1 requires all new overnight recreation parks to be governed by planned unit development. The applicant is required to pursue this request in order to revitalize the proposed use. The proposed zoning from commercial 1 to planned unit development is not consistent with the surrounding area's zoning, however, neither is the current zoning. According to the Putnam County, excuse me, according to Putnam County's future land use policy A193A4G, marinas and fish camps will be permitted only adjacent to George's Lake, Crescent Lake, Lake George, and the St. John's River and its major tributaries, and are subject to compliance with detailed and specific standards of the Land Development Regulations. This policy is promoting the placement of fish camps along Crescent Lake, among other bodies of water. The current zoning is commercial neighborhood, and the future land use designation is rural residential, which are contradictory to each other. Within the rural residential future land use element, one of the policies stipulates that commercial uses must be governed by a planned unit development and cannot be standalone commercial zoning. The property does not meet the requirements set forth by the comp plan to remain as commercial neighborhood, C1. However, rural residential future land use category would allow a fish camp minus an owner's residence. The private right-of-way does not meet the locational requirement for overnight recreational parks, but the applicant has included a maintenance and improvement, a maintenance agreement and an improvement plan within the associated development agreement. Staff located records from the Florida Department of Health dating back to May of 1975. Had the use resumed without interruption from 2012, the zoning board of adjustment could grant the right for expansion or intensification. One of the provisions that must be met in order to vest a non-conforming use- One of the provisions that must be met in order to vest a non-conforming use is that the use shall not be abandoned for more than 240 days, which is why we must seek permission for the P U D. That being said, staff does not have a recommendation for approval on this request, simply because it doesn't adhere to the requirements. We're going to put it to the Board of County Commissioners the same way, give them the facts, and let them decide how they would like to proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Are there any questions of staff?
I have some. So currently, with the zoning being C1, but the land use is, it's not consistent with rural residential, what can he do with the property currently?
So right now, he really can't do anything with the property.
But the vesting on those 21 units expired, basically, when they were abandoned 20 years ago?
So in 2012, the use ceased to exist. And then 240 days after that, that vesting that was issued in 2001 was essentially null and void.
Okay. The, okay, I want to hear what the applicant.
Okay, anything else, questions of staff?
Yes, sir. Can it be used for now? It's zoned something.
Yes, sir, it's zoned commercial 1, but the issue is the rural residential future land use element layer that's underlying the zoning district doesn't allow for commercial zoning districts to occupy within that future land use category. The only way a commercial use could exist on that property is if a planned unit development was approved.
I actually remember that fish camp back in the 60s, so it's been there a long time.
Let me get this straight, Zach. The man cannot put a single-family residence in the P U D and live there. Is that what you said earlier?
No, sir. The question was, what can he do with the property currently?
No, no, when you was giving your.
So the single-family residence will be included in the development agreement for the P U D. So it would allow him, if approved, to have a single-family residence, and then 15 RV sites, and then a, like a camp store, office area, laundry facility, that sort of thing.
Okay. But without doing a P U D, he could have a single family, because it's RR, right?
Well, it's commercial zoning, so you can't have a single-family residence in commercial zoning.
He would have to rezone it.
Yeah, but.
And actually, some action's going to happen.
But the future land will trump the zoning, so that should not be a problem to go down to put a house. But he wants to do a package, which probably would be the wisest thing to do, anyway.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, well, ask the applicant or the applicant's agent. Are you here? Would you like to come forward and speak to us?
I would.
Thank you. State your name and address for us, and.
Robert Mara, 9315 Sumter Park Drive, Fort Myers, Florida, presently. Hopefully, it'd be 130 Smith Lane. Madam Chair and Commissioners, thank you very much for hearing my plea and the P U D application. Well, you said you knew the property has a fish camp back in the 60s, and that's what I noticed. Once I saw the property, being in 40 years in the marine industry, I knew what I'd like to do. And of course, being that, and given the property itself, in the pristine way that it is, with the Cypress hammock, the vegetation, it's natural, it has the boat ramp, it's basically divided into two parcels, I say it's two parcels, the roadway goes through the middle of it. And you can see where it was a fish camp, and where it had actually motor homes, mobile homes, and RVs at one point. So they did have permanent residents there that had addresses on the site, which, at this point, we'd just like to do a few RV pads and allow people to enjoy the natural beauty of the lake, to come down, launch the boat, go fishing for a day, stay and enjoy the property that's there. And of course, I'd like to have my residence, so I can enjoy with them. So we have been doing some cleanup on the property. I've had the property for three years, and this is my first time before the board. So I just want to give a quick shout-out to Zachary and Jennifer for helping me with this as well. But, you know, I can answer any questions that you may have.
Okay. Are there any questions of Mr. Mara?
What is, and I apologize if I missed it in here, what is the proposed septic, have you gotten that far with?
Yes.
Okay, tell us about that.
I've been with the Health Commission. We have a septic tank on-site, which will handle one four-bedroom house and 15 RV pads in its current state. The only thing that we're looking into right now is the drain field. But everything else has been opened, inspected, tanks, lines, everything is there, clean, ready to go.
Okay, thank you.
And you said you're going to pave the road?
That's the.
Within five years?
Yes.
Are you paving it with millings or asphalt?
It would be asphalt.
Okay.
And that will be adjacent to your property and within your property?
The property right now has a paved road on it. Yep, that runs through the, from the entrance of the property to the boat ramp.
Okay. Where would you actually pave?
It would be from the beginning of the property to Paradise Shores Road.
Okay, the entire road?
I believe it's about 1,480 feet, I think it is.
And you would pave the whole thing with asphalt?
Yep. In the meantime, I have been maintaining the road with my tractor and road grader, you know, the best we can. Yep.
Okay.
So it is a private road, so without me getting on there, it's a little rough.
It was a little rough yesterday.
Yeah.
So, okay, thank you very much. I need to ask this, any ex parte communication? I did, yesterday, with one of our county commission candidates from South Putnam, ride to this property and look at it. He gave me no opinion, and I have, there's no influence that he had whatsoever on me. But I did it to help educate him on what happens with planning and zoning. I did it with the next case, too, so. Any conflicts of interest?
Nope, no, ma'am.
All righty. Thank you very much, and please remain around, so we can ask questions if anything comes up.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
All righty. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak either for or against this particular case? Please come forward and state your name and address, and after you speak, would you grab one of the blue cards and fill it out?
Good afternoon, appreciate the time. This is my lovely wife, Rose. My name is Andy Brule. I own 123, 125, and 129 Smith Lane.
Mm-hmm.
I've owned the property for five years. Smith Lane is not a public drive, it is privately owned. Each resident owns to the center line of it. It is not paved, it is crushed gravel and broken stone. The maintenance that has been done to it is nothing more than broken headstones, one of which has punctured my tire. Each one of the residents on Smith Lane had deeded access to the boat ramp, and for over a year have been denied it. I have several concerns as to what the camp effects is going to have on all of the residents, not just myself. And the harsh reality of it is the camp there before brought some of these problems from, you know, vehicles parked in front of residents' homes, making it very difficult for them to get out, almost impossible for emergency services to get in. The road now is barely wide enough for two cars meeting head-on to get by each other. Paving it sounds great, but this, again, it doesn't belong to one individual. It is a shared easement where each owner owns to the center line. I have no problems with a business, an entrepreneur, but I do have concerns about our deeded access. One of the reasons I bought that, these properties, is to have lake access to launch my canoe and my kayak. I've been denied. So, I mean, at this point, I have several concerns, several questions, as a three-time landowner on the block for five years.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Mr. Mara, do you have an answer to those questions?
I want to speak.
Okay, just a minute. Mr. Mara's going to address those questions first, so please be seated.
Yes, in response to Mr. Brule's question in regards to the denied access, we have been doing work on the property. So state law and my insurance company required I put up a construction fence. So right now, we have a temporary fence and a gate, locked gate. We have been doing the bulkhead work, so the entire boat basin that's there has been re-bulkheaded and is through first phase of inspection with the county. So we need to complete that, and then we need to go for our finals. We have two new electrical services that are going in. Florida Power and Light should be coming there, I believe, this week, maybe next week. So since it is under construction at this time, it is fenced and gated under Florida state law.
What plans do you have to honor any deeded access to the boat ramp?
Everybody that has it, I've never denied anybody anything, okay? When I put the fence up, it became a huge issue with Mr. Brule in the state that he told me that he has rights to the property. And I says, "You have a right to launch and retrieve a boat only as per the deed." That's the way it's written, with about a half, I guess, half the property's on the street, not all. So it's, you know, like I've told everyone else on the street, you want to come down? If I'm here, please feel free, come down, say hello, you know, but while it's under construction, I do have it fenced and gated. We had a huge problem, the sheriffs knew about it. We had a lot of trespassers, we had a lot of people down on the property using the boat ramp, people from out of town using the boat ramp while no one was there. We had a lot of people from the neighborhood coming down, using the property. So at that point, we had to secure it a little bit, just so, you know, we didn't have any issues.
Will you have parking available on-site for anyone who is in the community that wants to launch a boat?
The way it's written and the way it's understood is that there's no parking for the residents. They launch and retrieve a boat only. They launch their boat, they take their car and trailer home, and then they come down and they retrieve their boat and they take it home. That's what was written in the original writ that I found, I think it was 1975 or '78, when Mr. Smith started to sell off the properties, and he put that clause in the deeds. Now, I've read through the deeds, everyone is now worded differently, something that should be maybe uniform, okay? Also, the access to the boat ramp, it's not much of a boat ramp, it's in desperate need of repair. So launching a boat there would be at your own risk, okay? Also, the neighbors that come down and use the boat ramp, I would have to have them additionally insured, and they would have to be insured to use that right-of-way. I mean, it's still private property, but at the same time, if they're going to use that right-of-way, what's their, if they do get hurt on the boat ramp, they need to be insured privately.
And this will be a single lane boat ramp?
It's a very small boat ramp, yes. Yeah, a bass boat's the biggest thing you're going to get.
Any other questions of Mr. Mara?
I have a question.
Lean forward, get your microphone.
I haven't seen your deeds, so I don't, I can't comment on deeded access. We have an attorney sitting here on this stand, and I've been doing real estate for 40-some years here. Whether or not you gave the deeded access, or I gave it, if I owned the property, let's say I'm Mr. Smith, and I gave deeded access to Mr. Jones, unless there's some verbiage in there that says it expires, or?
No, it does not, not that I know of.
I'll give you an example. I own 60 acres, and there's a hunting club that owns property, and they wanted to know if they could lock and close the road going in. Well, they're permitted to do that, as long as they give me a key to their lock, so I can come and go. So if you have it fenced, and you do have a lock on it, I would say that they have an access, if the deeded access gives it to them, but I haven't seen it, give everybody a key that has that deeded access.
Okay. And with that.
And we have an attorney that will either say I'm stupid, or I'm halfway right.
My only concern is while it was under construction, do I, you know, I felt that I had the right under Florida state law to restrict the access, due to the fact that it's a construction site under Florida state law.
I'm not hearing the question.
I don't think, just because it's under construction, that he can block it off. If the access was given, the access is that dirt that they're going on.
I don't mean to be rude, but I think we're off the subject. Yes, I was, we need to focus, if you don't mind, Mr. Schwing, to the task at hand and what's in the petition, as opposed to trying to deal with hypothetical questions here.
All right, I have no questions, then.
Okay, any other comments? Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak either for or against this particular case?
I do have one more question for the applicant over here. Regarding that road being a private road, and, again, I didn't look at it to see that they owned to the center of it, what are you?
They do, yes.
How, are you just going to approach each of them, and?
I would have to send a letter to everybody with my intentions, and obviously get their approval to do so.
What if some persons deny you that?
That's a good question. So do we pave around their parcel?
We're going to have to work with Public Works on that to begin with.
Yes.
And Public Works will have to approve your plans and your style and everything else you're doing. But the residents who own to the center of the road have rights, and that's going to be something you're going to have to address.
Absolutely.
I don't think you can arbitrarily just say, "I own these lots and I'm going to pave this road." That seems to be a little bit off kilter, so.
I mean, I agree, it would be a huge improvement to, you know, have a boat paved, because it's not a good one, for sure. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir, you want to speak? Please come forward, give us your name and address. We'll give you three minutes.
I'm Carl Bim. I own part of Charlar Civic Association in Crescent Lake Shore Drive. My parents and I built, a long time ago, 65 acres of an easement right-of-way set up for a boat basin. And every lot owner owns to the center of the road, which allows them to have easy access to that boat basin. My name's on it, but still gives everybody access to it. Now, S and M Fish Camp, I've been there since, let me see, commercial fish, and damn, since around the 70s? I was born in '61, so I've been fishing since I was 16 on Lake Crescent, if not a little younger. S and M Fish Camp's been around forever. It's been like a historical site, okay? The road that goes in and out of there is always not maintained by the people that own the land to the center of the property. There are more bumps, more crevices, more crap thrown in there, and you shake stick at. Everybody throws concrete blocks in front of their driveways to get to it, and if a man offers to pave it and pave the extra assistance of it, I would think that'd be a good thing, because I like to travel that road as well. S and M Fish Camp also was the only place around there where we can go in and get our bait, okay? When the Corps of Engineers came into Lake Crescent, they wiped out the hydrilla, they killed all the eelgrass, they killed the manatees, they killed a lot of wildlife that I have special to me out there. And salt branch is now busy. People are coming in, putting in grass and seeds and reseeding the area, but that's still not enough compared to the eelgrass that died. The ecosystem in Lake Crescent has been destroyed a lot. And if we can put a fish camp back where it came from for a historical site, and help pave the roads, and make the roads better, I would think that would be a good thing for the community, because I use it, okay? And a lot of other people and commercial fishermen, the Harrises, used to use it. And I just think it'd be a really good thing to do. It'd also bring in revenue, it'd also give jobs to people, and I thought that's what the county was based on. And I thought that's what the county was based on. So that's all I got to say about it. And I commercial fish Lake Crescent for over fifteen, twenty years now.
Thank you.
And we have no other... By the way, we also don't have any fish camps except one that I know of that sell bait right there on 309 and 308 at the junction at the Handiway Store just up from Renegades. There's an old man that's running that particular one. And it's the only one I know of. And we used to have twelve. So now we're down to one. So it'd be really nice if we had another one where we live at on Lake Crescent. Anyway, thank you, guys. I'm Carl Oldbem.
Thank you.
You need to state your address.
Your address.
I got several. But where I live at right now is 400 Crescent Lake Shore Drive, Crescent City, Florida, and Charlar Estates.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
If you would fill out a card. Anyone else wishing to speak either for or against this case? In that case... Come forward, please, and state your name and address.
My name is Robert Rundell.
We need to get you on the microphone.
Got you. My name is Robert Rundell. I live at 104 Lake Shore Lane, Crescent City. I am a neighbor of this property. In principle, I don't have a problem with a fish camp. I remember the old fish camp. I used to buy bait there. My one concern is that civility has changed a little bit in recent years that this would be a loud site, which may have loud music carrying on until the wee hours of the night. And days gone by, they used to have some bluegrass music out there, but it usually would shut down by about ten o'clock. So that's my only concern, would be noise.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, do you want to address anything else before we close the public comment?
Again, thank you. In response to the noise and that's been brought up, I've also heard that, you know, we're going to be a nightclub and everything else and we'd be rock and rolling all night long. My goal here is to bring in what I'm going to call a class A customer with fifth-wheels motor coaches, allow people to come in and again, enjoy the lake. You know, rent a kayak, rent a boat, go fishing, enjoy the day. I don't anticipate having people there partying all night long. And if they are, that's going to go against my code of conduct for that park. It's exactly what I don't want. I get to hear the ATVs a block away running all night long with no mufflers on them. And that's far more disturbing than somebody having a cocktail and having a laugh. So with that being said, no, that would definitely go, you know, we're going to try to do a lights-out early. I'm looking for a fifty-five and over crowd. Definitely not looking for the partiers. And if they do, they have to go, okay? Because I won't have it given the residential neighborhood that we're in. I'm, you know, like I said, it's all about being the good neighbor, if not the best neighbor. And I plan on doing that, so... So, but thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Last call. Yes, sir, please come forward and state your name and address.
Good afternoon. My name is Stan Drew and I live at 108 Lake Shore Lane, which is the next street over from Smith. Basically, we have a drainage issue there. There is one big drain pipe that takes the water down McLean, which turns into Lake Shore Lane. And also, water has seeped over from Smith Lane. So if there are improvements, my question is, will those be made? When and if they pave the road, will there be proper drainage to the lake and not exceed or actually invade the property, which is mine? That whole area is pretty much soaked and Mr. Rundell takes care of that. God bless him. There's a curve that goes from McLean into Lake Shore. And he's protected that area for as long as he's been here. So we appreciate that. But it is one pipe that big that takes all the water. So that's my question and hopefully this gentleman will be able to answer it.
Well, we have to remember, this has got to be approved by Public Works. And the standards that would be held if the county were paving it are the same standards that the applicant will be yelled to in paving the road.
On a private road?
Yes.
Okay, because Lake Shore Lane is a private loan as well.
Right. This is going to be approved by Public Works and fully vetted by them. And it's going to have to go through the development review process, which again, Public Works, transportation, a lot of different agencies sit on.
Awesome, awesome. Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Thank you. Okay. No more public comments? I'm bringing you back to the board and closing the public hearing portion of this meeting. This is the time for staff to deliberate, to discuss, and/or make a motion, and we move forward.
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Hancock?
I have a... The gentleman had a very valid concern about the noise. And I know that he addressed that. But that, what happens when he sells? When someone else moves in? I don't know if there's anything you can do to tie and bind someone to some rules and regulations on that. I'm just saying it could happen easily.
In your motion, sir?
I didn't say a motion.
Oh. Mr. Stanley, Mr. Hodge.
I move we recommend to approve P...
I was asking a question.
Thank you. Are you through?
No.
Okay. Then continue, sir.
I'm bringing it up as a point. And I'm asking, I'm going to ask Zach if there's something you can do to curtail that in the future. I mean, we're sitting here. And again, I know he's got good intentions, but if he sells that property to another buyer or another person, it's kind of like that deed restriction. It doesn't have to be binding. It's supposed to be binding, but it's not, so...
And this zoning will stay with the property? It's not limited to just the ownership by this particular owner?
And Madam Chair, if I may address Mr. Hancock's question. The development agreement for this property does have a noise and sound regulation written into it. I don't remember it verbatim. I can look, I can bring it up, read it into the record. And you all can further discuss if you'd like to hear a different time, see if the applicant's amendable to that or if you want to just know that it is in there. And that's good enough.
Does it have hours and things that you remember? I don't recall.
Yes, sir, let me pull it up real quick, if you don't mind.
Yes, sir.
While we're waiting, does anyone else have a question from staff or a comment to make?
So I'd like the record to reflect that I was incorrect and there isn't anything in the development agreement for noise. If that's something that you all would like to discuss, we can pursue that. If there's no noise limitations written into the development agreement, it would just fall back onto the Putnam County Amplified Noise Ordinance, which does establish times.
Uh-huh.
I think they're 10:00 AM on weekdays and 11... I'm sorry, 10:00 PM on weekdays, 11:00 PM on weeknights or weekends.
Right, okay. Would the owner be amendable to establishing a curfew time for noise? I know we've done this with other sites and talked about it. Or do you want to fall under the Amplified Sound Ordinance, which is 10 and 11? Okay. You agree to adhere to the Amplified Sound Ordinance? Can that be written into the PUD agreement?
That would be automatic, right?
Hmm?
It would come automatic.
Yeah, it's automatically there.
Yeah.
It would be automatically. So the case law stipulates that if it's not covered in the PUD, it refers back or reverts back to the county regulations.
Yeah.
All righty. Well, that would clear up that. Thank you, Mr. Hancock. Do you have any other questions?
Mr. Hodge, I don't have another question now.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
I move we recommend to approve rezoning PUD 230007 as it is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Putnam County.
And I'll second it.
And Mr. DeSantis is seconding it. Any more discussion?
I would say it's not really consistent, but that was established by staff.
Yes, there's a variety. It's... There's some ambiguity there that we're looking at here.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other discussion?
Madam Chair, if I may, I'm sorry for flip-flopping. Within the first paragraph of the development agreement, it states, "The property will have a quiet time enforced after 10:00 PM to eliminate undue noise."
Okay, there.
Thank you.
Usually, it's in its own separate section, but...
It's in the development agreement?
It is.
Yes, ma'am. Article one, 1.1, purpose, about the seventh sentence end.
Got it, I see it. Thank you. So you're going to be 10:00 PM every day? That sounds good. Okay, any further discussion? Then let's vote. All the... And we're going to do it, roll call. Jenny, you want to record these? Mr. DeSantis?
Yes. Approve it.
Mr. Schwing?
Yes, approval.
Yes, approval.
Yes.
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 Chair votes yes. So you have a unanimous approval? This will go forward and it will go to the Board of County Commissioners at their January ninth meeting. So that'll be around nine o'clock-ish. And it'll be a hearing conducted very similar to this. All right. I would like to take about a fifteen-minute recess to give the board a minute to review last-minute submittals concerning the next case. So at this point, we'll take a recess. It's 5:22. Let's convene... Get over here in the right place. Okay. We're going to call case PUD 23 Zeros 9. Mr. Baker.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for the record, Zachary Baker, Planning and Development Services. This is a application to amend the Putnam County zoning map from agriculture to planned unit development. Applicants are Carl and Marilyn Bim. Property is located at 184 Clear Lake Road in Crescent City. Subject parcel is approximately 35.08 acres. Has a future land use designation of agriculture, currently zoned agriculture with the intent to rezone to planned unit development. Purpose of the request is to establish a recreational vehicle park. The applicant is seeking approval for the proposed RV park consisting of 13 RVs heights, three of which are proposed to be used by staff while working, 20 sites for tents and pop-up campers, equestrian uses including riding and short-term boarding, events such as weddings, reunions, and retreats, and a bathhouse. The applicant is proposing development as a single phase with the completion date no later than December 31st, 2030. Parcel has approximately 1,000 feet of frontage on Clear Lake Road, an unpaved county maintained right-of-way. The parcel is currently vacant with one storage building and is green-belted for, I want to say it was timber. Here we have an aerial image of the subject parcel. Here you have the zoning district for the subject lands and then surrounding property. And the future land use for the subject lands and surrounding property. This image is showing the proposed site plan, the conceptual plan that would be together with the development agreement. It is pretty hard to see because of the faint lighting. The proposed future land use and rezoning, the agriculture future land use category allows activity and resource-based recreational uses and rural recreational uses so long as no more than 10% of the land area in a distinct agriculture future land use area is used for similar uses. The uses occupying the agriculture future land use category in this portion of the county include residential, general agriculture, and commercial agriculture-related. Staff is not aware of any other recreational uses located within the general vicinity of the proposed development. The proposed resource-based recreational use and overnight recreation facility are both listed as permissible in the subject zoning district with an approved special use permit. However, LDC Section 45152 states in part, "Where there is a conflict or inconsistency, the more stringent requirement shall apply unless alternative restrictions are approved within a PUD ordinance." Since LDC Section 45196B1 requires all new overnight recreation parks to be governed by a PUD, the applicant is required to pursue a PUD in order to move forward with the proposed use of the RV park. Findings and recommendation. The surrounding uses are a mixture of vacant land, single-family residential, and bona fide farm operations. All areas around the subject property are zoned agriculture with an agriculture future land use designation. LDC Section 45196, parentheses 10, requires all internal streets and driveways to be paved in accordance with the specifications as set forth in Article 7 of the Land Development Code. The road accessing the property is unpaved, county-maintained road, and the level of service is undetermined, making it difficult to assess what improvements, if any, are required and when those improvements, if any, will be necessary. It is suggested, excuse me, it was suggested that the applicants provide some type of maintenance agreement with the county. However, the applicants did not provide any type of maintenance agreement binding their responsibility to maintain a road which is subject to deterioration based on the proposed use. The development agreement for the associated request is inconsistent with some of the requirements and references to the Putnam County Land Development Code and comprehensive plan without justification or context indicating waivers from such requirements and/or regulations. Therefore, again, staff does not have a recommendation for this request.
Questions of Mr. Baker.
Questions of Mr. Baker. Ms. Fortner.
I don't have one, actually, I know the answer already, so I'm not...
Okay. Yes, sir.
That, what, why don't you recommend? Why doesn't staff recommend?
So because it doesn't meet all of the requirements for a planned unit development, we can't make a recommendation for approval of the request. All we can do is simply provide the findings from the staff report and what we have reviewed to you all, for you all to make the recommendation to the B OCC. So the B OCC will also not get a recommendation from staff.
They'll get a recommendation from the PCPC.
That's correct, yes, ma'am.
You can't recommend denial anymore?
We can. My thing is, and this is just a personal thing and the way that I've chosen to run my department, is if we're recommending denial on a project, the real question is, is why'd you let that applicant come forward?
you let that applicant come forward? But we have an obligation, really, to allow any person to exercise their right to have their petition heard. So, I'll take you in front of the board, I'll give them facts, both good and bad. I just simply, I mean, if I'm going to recommend denial, I would do that when they're in my office. And when I meet with people, I tell them, you know, this is the facts, you mean, it doesn't meet the criteria, it's, and I can't make a recommendation on that.
Okay. Didn't mean to put you on the spot.
That's fine.
Well, that's what we did on the one right before this.
Yeah, same thing. Okay. Any other questions of Mr. Baker? Hearing none, I will bring it to a public hearing, or no, first I will bring the applicant or the applicant's agent up to speak. Please state your name and your address.
Good afternoon. My name is Marilyn Bem. I live at 400 Crescent Lakeshore Drive, Crescent City, Florida, 32112. I am here today to present our application for planned unit development for RV campground. And Mr. Baker has pretty much already discussed the nature of our application. And so, anyway, this RV, this campground will consist of 10 RVs, which originally actually planned for 20, but because of our typo error, it turned out into 10, because our drawing turned out into 10 only. And then some primitive campsite, which we don't think really will have much people on that because of the weather in Florida. But I, we just throw it in because we thought it's nice to have the area around the ponds. So, we, I would like to respond to the findings of the facts, and I think that's the reason why Mr. Baker cannot recommend anything. So, there are eight listed findings of the facts, and there are additional staff analysis that I would like to respond. The number one, I'm so happy that they have found that the area is compatible with the planned use of future land use designation. Now, number two is pretty much the same, that surrounding uses are a mixture of vacant land, single-family residential, and bona fide farm operations. And to add to that, I would like to say that majority of tracts of land surrounding the proposed development are undeveloped and non-residential. As you can see in the submittal that I have. Number three, the road accessing the property is unpaved, county-maintained road, and the level of service is undetermined because it was not included on the review, I think, 2018 or 2020, something like that in the report. But, and then my response to Policy A193A5C, that the staff quoted as requiring paved roads refers to commercial use. The policy A193A and five, the five has five subcategories, five subcategories. One is urban, two, urban reserve, three, rural center, four, rural residential, and five is commercial. So, that, that five is commercial. And we are applying for pod development to maintain our agricultural status and green-belt status. So, we are not planning to change into commercial. And then there is the Section 331, Paragraph 2 of our development agreement that states that the streets, roads leading to the RV camping area and within the camping area are not required to be paved, which we really specified because we want to maintain the country and natural area. So, furthermore, the development agreement states, "Project plan use, the location of proposed uses of the project are provided in development plan as Exhibit B. Camping sites will be integrated with the trees and other natural vegetations. Therefore, road paving will not be required. All other areas not otherwise labeled will be left in its natural country form to maintain its agricultural use." This is, I wrote this in response to the staff findings where they said that we have been written a waiver for the requirement where the streets and driveways inside planned unit development or business will be required to be paved. That is on the staff review, page 8 of 11. Now, number four, a planned unit development is the only way in which the Land Development Code allows new overnight recreation parks to be developed. Number five, the applicant is, this is the statement from the staff, the applicant is seeking a waiver to allow a maximum of three RV sites to be occupied by employees of the park, of the park while working. And that is specified in our development agreement. We initially asked for three because we had supposed to have 20 units, but now we're down to three. And so, we can, we can ask for one, but we can totally waive that. If people are employees, they can stay in their car and eat if we won't have an RV for them to stay. Because if we will have a building, then we will have to go through building code and stuff like that. So, that's why we ask for an RV, which is already have lounge for them to eat, a place for them to microwave their food, and the toilet. But we are willing to rescind that request. Number six, the development agreement for, this is from the staff, "The development agreement for the associated request is inconsistent with requirements and references to the Putnam County Land Development Code and Comprehensive Plan without justification or context indicating waivers from such requirements and regulations." So, I wasn't sure what it was about, but I think because it was stated in the email of Ms. Giselle, that Section, that Policy D121 and Policy is 511, that they cannot find it. It's my mistake, and I admit to that because I was referring to the policies in 2016. But despite that, it is stated in there that when it comes to the water, the permitting, we have to apply for permitting from St. John's Water River Management District and/or any other federal, state, and county agency or departments that are applicable and necessary. So, therefore, missing a number or numbers should not be construed as a negative towards our application since we know the regulatory agency or agencies that govern the permitting. Sanitary water, we have to go through the Department of Health, and Department of Health will take care of that. They will keep us straight. I'm sure of that because we've been there already. Number seven, and other findings, the proposed development would be situated on lands that are affected by FEMA flood zone hazard areas, potential jurisdictional wetlands, and SGRWMD high aquifer recharge areas. Additional permitting and improvements regulated by local, state, and federal agencies will be required to ensure safe development of environmentally sensitive lands. So, my response is, I'm confused about that because the staff, on page seven of 11, in Paragraph 1, the staff report states, "The subject property is within FEMA flood zone 10 and A, which is not a flood hazard area." And when it comes to the environment, we always have to go through the EPA or, or whatever agency that is in charge of that environment. So, it's not something that we should worry about because there is, we cannot move forward, forward without their approval. But the location of our RVs is in the highland and away from the water. So, I don't see why there, there will be a conflict with the EPA or its equivalent regulatory And so, there is more staff analysis on page 7 of 11, roadway and traffic circulation. So, as I read there, I have watched Mr. Holmes a lot, I had watched your YouTube, and as he said, this will require some expertise in the opinion to be acceptable. As in the court, you don't just accept any opinion, but there should be a level of expertise. One thing I would like to say about the history of this property, in 1972, the developer's parents obtained this 40-acre property, and five acres of that was sold. In 1974, an access right-of-way, 33 feet on the north end, was given to the county. So, that 33 feet is almost like 33,000 square feet of property that supposedly been an inheritance of my husband, but now is Clear Lake Road. And is being enjoyed by the current residents who are driving up and down that road. So, I think I'm gonna stop on that.
I think that's it.
Are there any questions of the applicant? I do have one. The report indicates that part of this property is in a high aquifer recharge area. And how are you going to work around that with what you're doing?
That's exactly the reason why this is, our RV park is in a rural setting, and we're gonna put that in our website, that if people would like to come, they should expect that it is country. So, their vehicles will park there, but there will be trees around. It's not like renegades or anything where it's a social place, no.
Okay, what I'm asking about is the part of your land which falls within a high aquifer recharge area.
I would like to see proof of that because when we had a well dug up, we cannot even reach water until so many feet. And it's, it's, it's just a surface area, and we were told that the aquifer is very far.
Zach, you want to address that?
Can you repeat the question, please?
Talking about the aquifer recharge areas, and she said she would like to see proof of the fact that it falls within a high aquifer recharge area.
All we do is reference the St. John's River Water Management District maps for the high aquifer recharge area, and a portion of the property was located within that, that area.
Do you have those maps? Are those maps in our packet?
I don't believe so. They are on the GIS maps for Putnam County.
So, there's no way we can look at them right now?
I might be able to pull them up online.
Okay.
Do you remember, Zach, how big an area you're talking about? I mean, the whole thing's 35 acres or thereabouts.
Yeah, so the, you know, with the GIS maps, they're just for reference purposes, so I can't get an actual amount of acreage. I want to say it was close to 50%, but it's been a while since I've looked at it.
Also, I would like to know what is a high aquifer recharge area. From my limited understanding, which I have read maybe before, it's like lots of trees and vegetation, which is not, not developed area? I'm not sure. But that's why we are reducing the human footprints in the area.
The high aquifer recharge area, it's, so there's the aquifer recharge area, you've got low, medium, high, and then discharge. So, that portion that's within the high aquifer recharge area, the majority of the water that recharges the Floridian aquifer goes through that. It's different type of soil and, you know, karst topography, which is more permeable, so it allows water to soak through the ground quicker to get to the aquifer.
Do you understand that?
Okay, I think so.
Okay, it's just, it, it really has to do with the soil structure.
Okay.
And the subterranean structure. Is it rock? Is it soil? Is it soil that water flows through easily or soil that?
We have sugar sand.
We have sugar sand.
Yeah. And it's white sand.
Right.
Beautiful white sand. That's exactly why we have very, for 35 acres, we're only applying 10 or 20, which is, in our paper, is 10 actually. We could have more if we are not concerned of the environment.
Okay. And you're not going to address the rest of the questions that were here?
Is there?
Were there any other questions you wanted to address? What questions do we have of the applicant? Yes, sir.
What you just said, you're, you're basically putting everything you got on a 10-acre piece as opposed to using the whole 35?
I'm not sure if it's 10-acre, but they are more spaced out. It, for me, it's the volume, the amount of RVs that will be allowed.
So, there are going to be 17 public RVs that will be allowed?
It will be 10, and it depends on if you will approve the three or just one. I actually don't want three anymore now that we made a mistake in our application of, that instead of 20, we put down 10 by accident. So, we want, it, I just wrote there maximum of three. So, yeah, the highest will be 13 if we do the, you know.
10 for the public and one, and three for employees.
One, maybe for.
My wife.
I, I know.
Maybe for staff, yeah.
So, you wouldn't have three, you then have 12? Or you're just going to keep 10 for the public?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Can we note that, Jack? Zach?
Yes, ma'am. I went ahead and pulled up the St. John's River Water Management District aquifer recharge area. Majority of the parcel is affected by that high aquifer recharge area.
Mm-hmm. It would be with that same structure.
How many percent is it?
Well, she's got it up on the, on the board.
Yeah, I don't have a percentage. It's up here on the screen.
Well, we can always adjust the location where the higher.
Your back southeast, southwest corner is all that's not within, in a small sliver on your back property line.
The good part is the brown?
Yep.
I'm, I'm colorblind, so whatever's not red.
The tiny, the part at the bottom.
Bottom left, bottom left is?
The bottom left is, I believe, like, I don't, I don't know, I think it's medium.
Yeah. Yep, it is medium.
I have to put all my glasses on to see that, Zach.
And I just wanted to clarify, so we're going from thirteen RV sites, three of which for staff, to ten RV sites, one of which for staff?
Eleven, be eleven RV sites, one of which is for staff? Or would it be ten RV sites, one of which is staff?
Yes, ma'am.
So a total of ten?
Ten for, ten for customers and one for staff.
So it would be eleven, total of eleven RV sites?
Yes.
Okay, this will have to be an amendment to the recommendation, or we'll have to note it in the recommendation. Okay, anything else you would like to add?
Not at the moment.
Sir, do you want to speak? Give us your name and address and...
I'm Carl Bim, I'm the husband of this estate. I'm just looking at that brown sitting at the bottom of a considered wetland section of my property.
Now, that's considered medium recharge area.
What's the red for?
High recharge area.
Oh, 'cause that's the, all that red out there is, top up there by the county road is, is forty, fifty feet of sand.
Mm-hmm. It's very permeable, apparently.
Okay, I was just curious.
You still have a lot for ten, thirteen RVs?
Oh, yeah, we have plenty of land. We don't want to develop it into a, anything like renegades, like she said. We want to have a nice rural area where we have campers that come in and enjoy the beauty of our nature. We want them to actually enjoy the deer that go across there. I've got some beautiful racks out there, beautiful deer. I don't hunt. I love animals, and bringing people out there is a good thing, because we've also got twenty-seven signatures already of people that thinking it would be a good idea to have us out there and bring in other people's revenue to the county and into Crescent City itself.
Sorry, I forgot to mention the support of the business. We just stopped asking for signatures because we already have twenty-three, I think, in there.
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven, and that's enough for us.
Okay, thank you.
We need more.
Was there an environmental survey done of this site?
No, ma'am.
Okay, so we don't know if there are any endangered species habitating that land?
No.
Okay. All righty, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, by the way, from the previous...
Microphone?
The previous PUD, thank you. I'm really, about S and M Fish Camp, although that was a pretty cool thing to do.
Okay. We've already adopted that one. All right. Any questions of the owner or the applicant, the applicant's agent? Okay. Please stick around because we may have more, we have more questions for you later. At this time, I'll open up the public hearing portion of this meeting. I will remind everyone that during this public hearing portion of the meeting, whoever's speaking is going to be asked to come to the microphone, speak into the microphone, and speak directly to the board and no one else in the audience. You will be given three minutes. I'll attempt to use the three-minute timer that the county uses, and at the end of your time, we will ask you to bring it to a close. And we will ask that everyone refrain from comment or anything while someone is speaking or after someone is speaking. This is a time for a controlled, formal, public hearing. So we will begin that now, and I've got a series of cards, and I'm going to use the cards as they were presented to me. So you might think I'm calling you out of random areas, and frankly, I am. I just have a pack of cards. Kelly Pillsbury, would you come forward, please?
Kelly Pillsbury, two oh nine Clear Lake. I just want to say good evening. I'm here to speak against the rezoning application for an RV park with reasons why and discuss a few of many concerns I hope you take into consideration against moving forward with the rezoning and not allowing an RV park. The applicant has a history of trying to operate multiple businesses at this property of discussion for many of years, illegally at that, from paintball arenas to most recent ATV park, which the ATV park was called Southern Pride ATV. It was widely advised, widely advertised that it was a cash operation promoting cash payouts for races he was going to have. You can still see all this on Facebook today. Not only was the property not zoned for something like this, or did he consider the people who live here? He put anyone and everyone that, who went there at risk if anybody got hurt. Was there even insurance on this property for such events? So you hear people getting hurt, even deaths at Hog Waller, not far from here, what would have kept that from happening here and not even know if it would be covered? Let's see, this was and is to us more of making a buck. How can you avoid, and how he can avoid paying anything to the county, state, or federal on the income that he did make from a few people that did go out to the ATV park, being that it was a cash-only operation? While he was advertising Southern Pride ATV, he promoted very aggressively how law enforcement was forbidden and not allowed on this property. Him being anti-law following, nothing the police or county could do to stop him or what he was doing. And if anyone had a problem with someone at an event, that he had a boxing ring in the center of the property that people could take their issues there and fight it out in front of everyone to see. Again, this was all on social media, advertised by the applicant himself. The applicant had made it very known that he was building a Confederate Party, a militia against Biden with Southern Pride ATV. How can someone who promotes so much anti-law, clear disrespect for law enforcement, anti-law following, pro-hate, can be trusted to run an RV park surrounded by residential homes? Who is to say this RV park isn't just another way of covering up and building the anti-law militia that group he encouraged and expressed very much that he was building? Someone operating a business like this or any business at all that is putting all the resident's safety at risk, as well as the properties at risk to trespassing, vandalism, break-ins, stolen property? The applicant himself has been asked by multiple homeowners here to stay off their properties, to include ours, and he blatantly disobeys that request and no trespassing signs, should still come on private properties uninvited.
Need you to wrap it up.
I'm sorry?
Need you to wrap it up.
Okay. How can we trust that somebody's gonna take, make sure that the safety of the residents in the neighborhood is going to be taken when they don't abide the law themselves?
Okay, thank you. Our next speaker is going to be Leland Williams. Would you please come forward?
My name is Leland Williams. One nine, one nine five, Clear Lake Road. I'm accustomed to this. My wife and I have lived on Clear Lake Road for thirty-eight years. Clear Lake Road is a county-maintained unpaved road, providing single access to residents, including retirees and working families. The road's single access is via Bird Road, another single-access unpaved road. Bird Road's access is from Union Avenue. The intersection of Bird Road and Union Avenue is the location of a school bus stop, okay? Parents sometimes park on the shoulders of Bird Road, awaiting school buses. This congested and already tight intersection. Within two hundred yards of that intersection is a restricted view elevated railroad track used by Amtrak and freight trains. Within fifty feet of this railroad crossing is the Clear Lake-Bird Road intersection. Being rural and unpaved, it is common for people to ignore either the stop sign or the railroad track as a focus on the other. As a rural, unpaved road, Clear Lake Road already sees more than its share of unsanctioned ATVs, hot-rodding, lost-in-oblivious drivers. My concern is that an RV park campground business will complicate and multiply these Bottom line is if this business blocks Clear Lake Road, in any event, entry or exit of any resident or emergency response beyond it is impossible. Road conditions: Low rainfall routinely brings washboard grading, deep sand ruts and sandpit deterioration. Rains bring flooding and roadbed erosion. Increased traffic exacerbates these conditions. County efforts to support the road with fill and grading will be insufficient given RV stress. Limiting access of the residents regarding security. This rezoning application is only an attempt to, by the applicant, to bypass zoning regulations experienced previously but unregulated ATV racing. This could provide a con... Okay, I'll skip some of it. I'm sure you're gonna hear it, or you're hearing it as you, as I speak, I mean, after me. Harassing noise from ATV, trail motorcycle racing events, amplified vehicle speaker and sound system use, and loud generators is unwanted. Anybody would. We time this.
You've got ten seconds.
Any questions?
Thank you, sir. Juanita Bacon. Just give us your name and address, please.
Juanita Bacon, one eighty-seven and one eighty-three Clear Lake Road, and I've been living out there since nineteen seventy-nine. And we, you know, our road is a graded road, sand is maintained by the county. It has eight really sharp curves on it, so people driving down there like this, you know, the Daytona five hundred, I mean, they're just getting around those curves. In fact, we've had two people killed on those curves on the dirt part of the road, so, and they weren't even moving that fast. Somebody was, but they weren't. And so the concern is, you know, we're gonna have increased traffic with this, and that, you know, you don't even know people that may not respect the area and the fact that it's a dirt road and going slow and obeying the laws, et cetera. We need the, we can't get any enforcement whenever there is, like donuts and the road torn up and stuff like that. And, and of course, the deterioration of the road by overuse of vehicles. It just, it's really hard. We just, you know, it gets holes in it real easy, and like Leland said, it's really, takes a lot of maintenance to keep it. So, you know, the more traffic you have, the more this is gonna happen, and we just, you know, hate that. But also, you're having people that coming there that have no connection to the neighborhood, and they're, you know, they're there just for a day or two or three, and maybe they'll obey the area laws and maybe they won't. But, you know, then you have to call the law enforcement, and that's not necessarily an easy thing to get out there. So, you know, this is my main concern, and of course, the noise and stuff, if they do do the RVs, you know, that might be a big concern too. But right now, my main concern is the safety on that road, because we travel down there a lot, and like I said, there's eight really sharp curves on that road that they don't have stop signs. There's one stop sign at the intersection, but they don't have stop signs. They are just, you know, at the discretion of whoever's driving down the road at the time. So that's my, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bacon. Lee Ann Pillsbury.
My name is Lee Ann Pillsbury. I'm speaking on behalf of two oh nine Clear Lake Road. My grandparents built that lot in nineteen seventy, so we've been there for over fifty years. We currently, due to the applicant finally, apparently, able to get power, because we have an easement, we now have an opening that goes directly to our property. So we already have one gate. If this goes through, we're gonna have to get a second gate and possibly fence everything. And that's not what we're down there for. Additionally, like everybody said, the roads, they're not good. When we started going down there when I was a child, we would get stuck and have to call somebody with a tractor to come get us out. So I don't think this is a good idea. I don't think it takes the neighborhood into consideration. Not to mention, part of the property has already been torn up because of the ATV park. We do have gopher turtles, which I believe are endangered now. We have deer, we have bear, and we've seen, like, Florida panther tracks. So in addition to all that, there's gonna be some potential damage, I feel like, to the environment for the animals. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next speaker is James Dean. Please come up and give us your name and address, sir.
James Dean, no relation to the movie star. One seven eight Clear Lake Road. I purchased my property in eighty-four from Carl's mom and dad, and we have raised our three children there. We have, we're raising our four grandchildren now there that we have custody of, you know, through the state, and they cross the road. My mother-in-law lives right across the street from us. They cross the road four or five times a day. They, they're out there, you know, riding their bikes, and, and we know pretty much everybody, every vehicle that goes down our road, because it's a dead-end road, and we know all the neighbors. And of course, we see when Carl flies by with the dust trail, but, but we know everyone that's out there and who they are and what they're doing. It's a real rural area, so if it wasn't for that, there'd be a lot more crime. So we look out for one another. And so we are, we are, my wife and I are completely against a PUD in that neighborhood. I felt like that would be spot zoning. I'm not an expert on it, but it seems like, you know, there are no other PUDs in our neighborhood or anywhere near us. There's plenty of campgrounds around Crescent City. There's plenty of vacant campsites available all along the river, Georgetown, Lake Crescent, all around, and we don't need that in the middle of the woods. It's gonna attract all kinds of riffraff. We already know that. He's had people already living out in the woods, you know, out there, you know, which, I mean, I understand, that's his property. If he wants to let somebody stay out there in a tent or whatever, that's his, you know, prerogative. It's not official, you know, campground. If you go on SouthernPrideATV.com, you'll see that he's got, he's running a ATV park. You know, he's still got the website up. If you go back and look at the screenshots I have of what Ms. Pillsbury was talking about, it's all out there, public knowledge. You can Google it for yourself and see. He spent two weeks on a giant excavator that somebody paid for, cleared all the wetlands back there, cleared the delicate trees. The ecosystem is so delicate out there. If you go out there and look in the back, you'll see how it was destroyed for a mud bogging place like the one out there, you know, on the side of Palaca. So we are totally against it, and we know that the rules won't be followed, the sewage runoff, there's gonna be people staying in tents, there's tent camping with no sewer, no electric, they're gonna have shower place there, and probably maybe bathrooms in a trailer, which is really unsafe, and having people live out there in RVs, that's illegal. We know that. You gotta have a building permit, you gotta have a, you know, a permanent-type mobile home or something that passes the regulations. So I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Rick Hyer. Give us your name and your address, sir.
I'm Rick Hyer. Two oh one Clear Lake Road. Pretty much everything I've heard is... Pretty much everything I've heard is pretty much said. I live right across from the property, of his property. Just basically, safety concerns for even residents, because you don't know what's going to be coming in, staying there. I'm afraid it's going to be more of a residence. You know, you hear about people with RV parks, and they end up making a permanent residence instead of coming for a weekend and leaving. Just— but, you know, about the roads, everything. Carl's been told to stay off our property, and he's been on there a few times. We finally got cameras up, you know, and put no trespassing signs. And that's pretty much it. Plus, we live on a clear lake. The lake is clear, and it's beautiful. We're afraid that people might say, "Whoa, nice lake. Let's go swimming." Crossing through our properties, like I said, get hurt. Who gets sued? I just think it's just a lot of riffraff. It's just going to cause more trouble and harm than anything, so.
Okay. Our next speaker is Tom Lindeman. Lindeman.
Hey, my name's Tom Lindeman, and my wife Janet, we live on 176 Clear Lake Road, and we are adjacent to his property, right behind James Dean, who's that little chunk you saw on the map. We have 40 acres, so a lot of our property is adjacent to his. And actually, with the bulldozing the wetlands, a lot of it went all the way into my property. He didn't realize he was on our property, but several hundred feet of our wetlands got bulldozed and a big canal dug. But anyways, our little country road—I mean, when my neighbor leaves, his dog sleeps in the road waiting for him to come home. That's what kind of road this is. Dog sleeping in the road, okay? It's—it's only residents and resident visitors that go down that road. And besides UPS, there's no public that comes down that road. Like Pastor Jimmy—well, James Dean, he is our pastor. As he said, we know just about everybody, every car that goes down there. This is going to open up—there's no through traffic. It's a dead-end road. And as far as the aquifer, a large part of that, the giant square on the right of his property that we saw up there, we have 40 acres. And part of that recharge is on our property too. And we drink that water. We drink it. We feed it to our animals. We make our food with it. I'm afraid there's going to be poaching, illegal hunting. People that don't live on that road, when they finish their McDonald's, out goes the window. Trash on the ground. And us that live there, we stop and pick it up. And that's just for the few visitors that we do have that come out there. All of that property is undeveloped. It's just woods, you know? Out of our 40 acres, we took less than two acres and cleared just enough so trees can't fall on our house. And that's all we cleared. That's it. We can hear the animals, the crickets, the frogs, and even the gators croaking at nighttime. And I see birds and stuff. I go out there with binoculars and watch at sunrise, and there's animals I've never seen before out there. So there probably is endangered animals out there. What else do I got here? Also, a PUD opens up a whole can of worms. All it takes is an amendment—
Sir, I'm going to have to ask you to wrap it up.
If they want to bring in condominiums. But that's all I got.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Michelle Fristad.
Hello, my name is Michelle Fristad. My address is actually 415 Palm Avenue in Pearson. And we have purchased some property on Clear Lake Road. We are currently developing that property on Clear Lake Road, and we actually are meeting our new neighbors for the first time tonight, many of them. And we heard about this potential development. We were in contract for almost a year, and we looked everywhere, all over the country, all over Florida, and we very carefully chose the property that we purchased on Clear Lake Road. We looked at all of the neighborhood. We looked at the establishment. We looked at everything around it, because what we wanted was a small piece of land in an area that had established large acreage around it, so we would not be disturbed by anything other than the people that live there in a contented way. And as we are in the process of developing our property, we find out that someone on that property is now going to try to put in an RV park with tent sites with—we don't know what—is going to be living in those tents. But we have spent a lot of time looking at property, like I said, and we walked by property that was aligned by National Forest, because it was full of people living in tents. And we see the damage and the danger that happens with homeless people. I'm not saying that that would be the case, but it's a great concern of ours. So that's why we are very much against this happening.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for hearing this. I'm also at 415 Palm in Pearson. And we have—I echo what she said. We came in thinking tonight that this was going to be a mobile home park, and we were going to voice our concern against a mobile home park. And then we find out that it's not a mobile home park that we're talking about. It's an RV park with tents, which is going to bring in other, more transient people rather than a mobile home park. It would have—a mobile home people would have a vested interest in upkeeping of property, taking care of things, not throwing the McDonald's wrappers out or whatever on the road. They would have a vested interest in the community. But with RVs coming and going, 10 RVs—I think we said that 10 RVs, there would be no telling how long they would stay. At any one time, you'd have traffic with heavy RVs up and down that dirt road. And having just been there a short time, that road is—it can be graded one day, and in a week, it is washboard all the way in. So I'm sure it would be even worse with heavy traffic. If we had known this, and we would not have bought the property. And it being on a dead-end road, it just—there's no where. They've got to find a place to turn around. And I'd just like to thank you for your time, for having put up with this. We, of course, are voting our opposition on this.
Thank you, sir. Please let the records indicate that Mr. Hancock left at 6:30. Got it, 6:36. Thank you.
Emergency. Yeah, it's an emergency.
Okay. Hope everything's all right. Okay, is there anyone else in the audience other than the applicant who would like to speak either for or against? Okay, I'll take you one at a time, ma'am.
I wasn't sure that anyone else said this or not, but I'm Pam Dean, James Dean's wife. We've been out there since 1984.
And your address.
178 Clear Lake Road.
Okay.
And it's a one-way in, one-way out. At certain times, there's trains that stop. You might have a 30-minute time where you're waiting on the train to pass by. At times, the railroad tracks crossings guards have come down, and I don't see how anybody could lift a guard up and then wait for the RVs to go in and out. The road's almost impassable. But if we get a fire out there, because it's all woods, and you've got to get everybody out of there, that's going to really cause a really bad traffic problem, traffic issue to go around the corners.
I'm sorry, I didn't reset it right.
And if you've got two vehicles, two vehicles can't even go around the corner at the same time. So whenever you have an RV, you can't hug the inside turn. You've got to be in the middle. So it's going to be very dangerous for that to be—to come out there.
Okay. Thank you. And I had somebody else's hand up? Yes, ma'am, you can come on up. Yeah, get you next. Please give us your name and address.
My name is Marilyn Mar Scott. I live at 171 Clear Lake Road, and I am against this project. 26 years ago, we bought our property, and in 26 years, we have lived in this beautiful place. We had come from Miami, and we were just thrilled to come here to Putnam County, to where trees still grew and where you could see an otter in the lake. These were things that were very important to us, because we had lived on a boat for years. So we came here, we love it here. And in that 26 years, only the last two years has the population doubled in our area. And both Clear Lake Road and Bird Road are only allowed—there's only one access in. There's no egress out for either Clear Lake Road or for Bird Road, which now has a much higher population than it had years ago. So this is not a good—and the road is sugar sand. And even when people come and their grandkids come for the weekend, they mope it up. So just imagine if people who don't live or have any connection with the people who live in that neighborhood are coming in, they don't care to take care of it. They just care for their vacation. So consequently, those of us who live there in quiet and peace and love our environmental land think that it will be disastrously affected by this. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Melissa Williams, and I have a letter here from my daughter. Her and her husband were unable to attend, and I would like to read it if that's okay. Dear members of the Planning Commission, Clear Lake Road has been my home for my entire life. It is where I spent my childhood and is where I have chosen to build my home with my husband. It is a beautiful, quiet place to live, and I'm sure all of its residents can tell you. As such, my family and I stand in opposition to the rezoning of the property located at 184 Clear Lake Road. Clear Lake Road is a small dirt road that could not handle the increase of traffic due to development. If rezoning of the property is approved for planned unit development, it would cause a loss of the tranquil environment that we and our neighbors all enjoy. In addition, the development of the 35 acres of land would have a massive impact on local wildlife. The owner's previous attempts to commercialize the property—to commercialize his property without proper zoning have already created an eyesore in the community. My husband and I hope you will deny the proposed rezoning. Thank you. Emily and Earl Ziegler.
And would you please give that to Ms. Kidd, so we can have a copy of it for the record?
And also, yes, ma'am, and also, we are opposed—we have heard things about they want to pave Clear Lake Road, and we're—all the residents are opposed to that.
And would you state your address, please?
I'm sorry, Melissa Williams, 195 Clear Lake Road.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else who would like to speak for—yes, sir? Name and address, please.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Jack Howard. My wife Terry and I own the property at 189 Clear Lake Road, which is directly across the road from the property in question this evening. I think already the case has been made that the road just is not going to handle that kind of traffic, just the design of the road. It's quite narrow in some spots, a large vehicle going one way, and anybody going the other way is going to be an issue. We also have a lot of wildlife in that area. We've got everything out there from—well, we've got bears on trail cams, we've got a Florida panther out there, we've got eagles flying around, and a lot of other animals as well. You find that—that's kind of common when you have wetlands. And we're concerned about what's going to happen to the environment if you clean a bunch of that stuff out and destroy their homes. We've also had some issues already with security in the area from people that don't belong there, you know, don't reside there or have any interest in the neighborhood, to the point to where several of us have had to put up security cameras to keep track of what's going on. We kind of feel like bringing more people into the neighborhood that have no interest in that area could make that problem even worse. And we want to avoid that. So we're hoping that y'all will deny this petition. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Last call. Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing portion of this meeting. I will ask Mr. Bim if he would like to come up and speak shortly, or his wife, either one?
Yeah, both of us.
Okay, just come forward and state your names and addresses, and I'll give you the same three minutes if you'd like to address some of these concerns.
Marilyn Bim, 400 Crescent Lakeshore Drive, Crescent City, Florida, 32112. I feel like I would like to address every concern you have, but I don't have the time. And I just would like to conclude that I am holding tight to the positive statement of the planning staff that the proposed resource-based recreational use and overnight recreation facility are both listed as permissible and the subject zoning district with an approved special use permit, which we are applying for now. Again, may I quote Mr. Holmes in the November 14, 2023 Board of County Commissioners meeting as he represented a PUD applicant. Court rules are designed to try to increase the weight and the credibility of evidence that is presented. Many people express their opinions, but it's not the quantity, but the quality of the evidence. But in order for the evidence to be given weight, there has to be a showing of expertise by the speaker or the writer, and no one so far had expressed their expertise. Rules are the only way to ensure consistency in anybody that makes decisions, like the court or like the planning commission, and today I am thankful for those rules. You have rules, you have to comprehend—you have a comprehensive plan and a lot of regulations. They embody concepts and definitions and they set criteria and benchmarks. And if anyone that are supposed to be trained to interpret those regulations miss the embedded meaning of those regulations, the written rules are there to prevail. And I trust your years of experience in interpreting and implementing the rules that you made. I believe that we have met the requirements of the PUD application. Since—I think I had addressed the concerns of the staff, every bit of them, and I am here today not to discredit anyone, but to try to win your approval for our planned unit development. Thank you.
Ma'am, you mentioned you were now asking for a special use permit?
No, no. I thought that the PUD is like a special—
No. PUD is a planned unit development. A special use permit is a variance that is issued by the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Okay. Yeah, I do remember that now. Yeah, it's for the PUD.
Okay, thank you.
And there is one thing that I would like to address, sir. It's the Facebook account. I tried to take that down. I don't know. So we will try to do that, but that is not an active account. You won't see any comments from us for a long time. There is none. So it's there, and it's not active. At one time, so we tried for the ATB, and we were turned down, and we were allowed a one-day special use permit, which was—we were—we already had paid for everything, and we were supposed to go through that. And the evening before that, Mr. Troyano called us and canceled, because he said the security that we are supposed to provide should be from PCSO only, even though I told him that we had a friend from Highway Patrol, and we have licensed security guards, but he denied that. he denied that. So we never did that.
Okay. I'm a bit concerned about some of the activity that has been cited that was done without...
That's what they're saying, but that didn't happen.
No.
That didn't happen.
And, okay, I've got some more questions, and I think some of us probably do. Mr. Bim, we'll hear from you, and I'll give you three minutes also. Name and address.
Carl Bim, owner of 10184 Clear Lake Road, of thirty-five acres in question.
And your address?
Where I live at is 400 Crescent Lakeshore Drive, Crescent City, Florida, in Charlotte Civic Association area. I've been called a liar so far. I've been called a thief. I don't like that very much. I've ran for office, I've fought for people's civil liberties, and I'm ex-military. And I have no problems with these people behind me. They have the right to their own opinion. I'm not mad at them. The Pillsbury family in the past gave me permission to be on their property, that was the old man, and when that female married into the family, they locked the gates. I have never been on their property since. The land across the street there, we have...
Excuse me, no, uh-uh. I'm sorry, got to keep a little decorum here.
Everybody behind me, I've helped one time or another with my front-end loaders do two storms, damages, et cetera. And I'm still denied to have power to my property across the street. If it wasn't from a grandfathered in easement right-of-way of the previous woman over there speaking by the previous man that sold her the land, who was a friend of mine, he gave an easement right-of-way to allow me to have power on the north section, sorry, the northeast section near Jimmy Dean. Jimmy Dean over here is a good man, I like him, he has his rights for whatever he wants to do, he's a pastor, and I respect the man. I have no problems with him. As of thievery going on in the area, and in the past, it's documented with the Sheriff's Department, and the neighborhood kids in the area that grew up around here were busted for breaking and entering, it wasn't Carl Bim. The property that we're trying to do is, we've had it, and we had to give up easement right-of-way footage of thirty-three feet, thirty-three point six feet wide, twelve hundred and fifty feet long, forty-two thousand square feet of frontage of that road belongs to me. I don't tear up my road. The people that are behind me, on the other hand, own ATVs. I had an ATV park, I have ridden on one ATV. My neck and back's been broken in the past, and I don't own an ATV, okay? We haven't, when we did our ATV park, everything was legal, legit, we had a million dollars coverage, we had four security officers out there, and it didn't work, it didn't fly. Everybody had their own backyard to play with their own ATVs in, and it didn't work. Or we would have pursued with the county code enforcement and the whole nine yards. We even had a paramedic there that was legal. So I don't know what kind of informant they had in the back or how they wanted to make me look, but I got all my stuff documented to prove it if necessary of me following orders. I've been doing it for six years in the Army, and I have no problems there with an honorable discharge. So whatever you guys redeem that we're supposed to go by by guidelines, now, we've tried, we're working with them, we paid the price of fifteen hundred dollars to do this. And everything that we do, it seems like I get knocked down constantly in this county. And it doesn't stop me, I've got God on my side, I don't worry about very much stuff. But our PUD is something that we need because we own that land and we take care of that property, and we take care of that road. And when there's storm damage, I use my front-end loader to clear the land so these people can get in and out for free. I never charge them nothing, that's what you're supposed to do, is help out your neighbor. And I do help them as much as I can. But I'm not going to bring up names or anything like that because that's just rude. But so far, we're trying to get ten RV spots out there, a couple campsites, they're going to be regulated, we're not going to allow any riffraff to come out there. I have stuff out there that can be stolen and has been stolen in the past, and I know who did it, but I'm not going to talk about that. But the thing about it is, is that everything we do out there, my wife is an RN, she's fixing to retire, I'm sixty-two years old, I want to retire. I don't have a nest egg like you guys, I don't. But if I can get campers to come in and have a good time and go down there to a four-acre pond where all my land is dry, when it rains like it did a couple times, yeah, my little pond fill up, that's normal. My other pond next to Jimmy Dean fills up because that is part of his land when we, when I sold him the property to help him out. Got stabbed in the back, but that's okay. But anyway, the four-acre property that we have, that's, that's wetland that I dug out, no, it's okay. I think I need to know the truth. I dug out that piece of land not knowing that Joe's property and my property were connected, you know? He wasn't even a resident at the time. The original person that owned that land was a friend of mine, and I didn't know he even sold the property. And I had his permission to take land from either side, put it in the berm on Ataco, dig it out through the corner of the corner markers, and then run it back that way from the guy out of Miami. Oh, yeah. So I was legally doing what I was doing. The DEP and the EPA that I checked with on my four-acre pond told me that, Mr. Bim, that is a man-made pond and that your family built that pond. We have dragline property scratch marks in it showing proof. Now, when a dragline goes out, it drops a bucket, and the more it digs closer to it, the deeper the bucket gets. That's only around in certain percentages of the property.
I'm going to ask you to wrap it up if you would.
Okay. Well, anyway, everything I've done so far, ladies and gentlemen, is legal to the book. If I was doing something wrong, I would have been in handcuffs, DEP would have arrested me, and so forth. And none of that's happened.
Did you have a permit from Water Management District or DEP or the county to dig out those wetlands?
I was told I didn't need one. I even went to Water Management over there, and they said, well, if it's a man-made pond, then you're allowed to, you're allowed to maintain it. I didn't dig it out. What happened was is that my dad used it as a fill area when we first bought the property back in seventy, nineteen sixty-nine or seventy-two. I can't remember, I was a kid, I was born in sixty-one, so I have no idea. But my dad clear-cut everything on that property before he planted pine trees. And everything went into that four-acre hole that he dug out to build up the ground. All of it turned into peat, and when you walk on it, it's about this far, it's about a foot and a half deep of peat, but there's no water. So what I did was I scraped off all the existing peat, put it up on the sides, waited for the rains to come, and now I finally got water out there, I've got ducks, I got poultry's, I got cranes, I left a big island in the middle of all the peat I could build up in it so I can have cranes not being attacked by bobcats or anything like that, you know, build a really nice setup. But no, I didn't have a permit because I wasn't, I was told I didn't have to have one, being it was a man-made pond. Every pond sitting on that property is man-made by my parents. And I got old photographs of the old kind of wind-up thing like this, that Dad, I still have one of those, that it shows Polaroid photographs of Daddy building and clearing that property back in seventy-two. So we didn't do anything illegal that I know of.
Thank you.
Anyway, I appreciate it.
Are there any questions of Mr. Bim while he's up here?
I just want a clear understanding. We're looking at ten RV spots plus one RV spot for an employee.
And how many camping sites? Ten sites?
Ten if people show up.
Twenty sites is what it is.
Twenty sites is...
Mm-hmm. And we're going to regulate them, we're not going to let riffraff in there.
Okay. Any other questions of Mr. Bim? Okay, so I'll bring it back to staff for discussion, deliberation, and a motion.
Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you. Board, we have a case before us that we don't have a recommendation on, but we have facts that have been presented to us, information that's been presented to us. We need to discuss whether this application falls within the policies and goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan and the Land Development Code. And then we need to make a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners. I will entertain a motion or a discussion.
As far as discussion goes, I'll, I've listened to several members in the audience, and to me, what they were describing was something a whole lot more than ten RV spots. I mean, that's not exactly a large operation. And there's thirty-five acres? Seems like you could put ten RV spots in ten camps or tents on thirty-five acres without hurting too much of anything. The one lady said they had, or may have been a gentleman, they're opposed to paving the road. I would think if somebody offered to pave that road that they're complaining about, let them do it. I know, I hear a lot of stuff, you know, not in my backyard, which is basically what you're looking at. I just have a hard time saying ten RV spots is going to be detrimental to somebody that lives on, you know, five acres somewhere.
Okay, thank you.
I have one question. Is there an existing trail system for four-wheelers and things like that, or what? I'm confused about that.
Come back up, Mr. Bim. Is there an existing ATV park?
No, ma'am.
Are ATVs using that as a riding range?
No, they don't.
Have they ever?
Actually, no.
So...
I thought you had mentioned earlier that you had one, you must have been talking somewhere else.
The SouthernPrideATV.com was described as being an ATV park.
We were trying to make an ATV park, it didn't work that way. The majority of the population on their own land, so they didn't come.
We already have the website before we applied for the special use permit.
Correct.
So is that going to be the name of this? You said Dragonwood?
Yeah, we're going to have Dragonwood Campgrounds LLC, which we already own the website and, or we're building in, we already own the name, and it's under SunBiz, and we got everything else dotted.
Did you have any kind of permit or any kind of zoning that allowed you to even propose an RV park or ATV riding park?
We tried, that's when we were denied.
We were allowed to have one day.
And then we have that one day, but was stopped the evening before we could do it.
I built a track out there that you see looks like Daffy's duck's foot. And I did that with a dozer, thinking I was going to make money on the property. And I had it set up to where everybody could have fun, and we had paramedics ready, and everything was going to be up to par. And nobody showed up to pay any money, we didn't have any money change hands. I had about twenty of my fellow friends that came over that had their own ATVs that I've known for years, and I let them play on the property for free. I mean, why charge them?
We have roads in there, but that's where his, his truck drives around the property.
Yeah, 2018 Ford four-wheel drive.
Okay. So you've never had a permit for any kind of recreational activity?
No.
But yet recreational activity has occurred?
No, we actually was allowed to have one day.
Okay, but you've had more than one day?
We have, no. We've only had one legal day, and we had a million dollars coverage, we hired the paramedics for over two thousand dollars to be there.
But is that the only day that ATVs have been ridden on your part, on your property?
For money, yes. For having a sport event, correct. We don't have any ATVs ourselves, we don't own them. As of them being there for that one day, yes, they was there, yes, we did have a permit, yes, we were denied, and yes, we haven't done it since.
Okay.
I do have the land set up for it.
They were there one day, you had a permit, they rode, but yet you were denied?
We were denied the evening before.
Of the event.
Okay. You were denied after it had already happened?
We were denied after we paid for the one-day special use permit. By evening, Mr. Troyano sent us an email, cancel.
Okay.
Because PCSO won't provide security.
The law said that we had to have proper, legal, documented security officers there.
Right.
And I had four of them there that were ex-military. And Bob Forbes's son is licensed security, and he was there.
But the event had already happened when you were denied? Or did it happen the night before the event was occurred?
During the time in which we were, we were denied, we were having the event of that day.
Okay.
And then they denied it for the second day. We were allowed to have a weekend, we did it on one day, we were illegal, they denied us on the second day, we had to shut down, and that wasn't fair.
Okay. Any other questions of the applicant?
I do. I see in your 3.3, 3.4 accessory uses and structures, references equestrian uses including riding and short-term boarding, events including weddings, reunions, retreats, yeah, I don't see anything else related to that in this development agreement.
We just added it in the application because it is part of the allowed uses, but I don't see any people, anyone with horses that will go there actually.
There's nobody with horses going to ride my property. Insurance is a million five to cover, and I'm not going to pay that.
It's just added in there, but we, now that we realize, we'll take that out because it's a high risk. They can hit the stump and fall off their horse and...
Okay.
Also, I believe when Zach was speaking, he, or somewhere in here I read that he had asked you to provide some sort of road maintenance agreement between you and the county, and then that wasn't included in your packet. Am I right on that?
Initially, when we met with Zach, he actually asked us if we will pave the road from the Clear Lake Road. I said, no, even if I have the money, the millions of dollars for that, no, because it is the county's responsibility.
And a taxpayer.
Carl, on the other hand, said that he is willing to do some grading if, in between the, the road maintenance, and the road is really bad. So I tried to contact the maintenance, I forgot the...
Public Works.
Public Works. And he did not return my call, we, we were just back and forth, and when I called, he's not there, then he leaves a message, and he's not there. I have his name there actually. And it's the same lady, that lady who provided me the papers for that right-of-way, of way that we cannot dig up now, she is from the Public Works, and she was very helpful. And that's how we only found out how much of the road was given by the family to the Clear Lake Road, it's actually thirty-three feet out.
Now, there are some people that live on that county road that maintain it themselves by pulling chain-link fence and concrete blocks on top of it to cut down on the washboarding on the property, because the road grader only comes in twice a month usually, and they're usually just after a rainstorm, which is a good thing. Sometimes before it, and then it gets washboarded out because of the soft dirt, but it's not their fault because of Mother Nature. But the traffic that goes in and out of there sometimes during the weekend is the people behind me, it's family and relatives that come down to party, like Fourth of July, it's like three, two hundred people running up and down that road with ATVs, and none of us is us. And I got video to prove that. So it's okay, I mean, I don't mind fixing my section of the road, my thirty-three feet, I do it anyway. I, sometimes when we have storm damage, I will even pick up the damaged branches that are laying in the road and toss them to the side so nobody ends up hitting them with their car. But it's not part of my job, but I do it anyway because it's the right thing to do.
Okay. Are there any other questions of Mr. Bim?
No questions, no comment.
Okay.
I guess my concern is, we're talking about issuing a PUD on thirty-five acres of land with very limited utilization of that land. And every PUD I've ever seen come through here ends up coming back again and again and again, and before you know it, you have thirty-five acres of developed land.
God, I hope not.
Yeah, I, I guess, and as far as what was presented today, I don't have a, like again, I don't have a big problem with that, but I just see the, the old, once the camel's nose is in the tent, it's going to keep coming on in. I don't, this seems like a project that needs to be approved by the big boys that get paid for this.
Yeah. They gave us a, a good problem without a recommendation, and we have to give them a recommendation. But that's why we don't get paid the big bucks.
Wish I did.
If I had to go by what I'm seeing right now, but knowing the potential of what folks can do with a PUD, I'd have to recommend we not approve this project.
Okay. Any other discussion? Then I will entertain a motion. Then I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to deny PUD 23-000009, that it is not consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Putnam County Comprehensive Plan.
Okay, we have a motion, do I have a second?
A second.
Okay. Gonna do a roll call vote?
Are we gonna discuss anything?
We can discuss more, yes, sir.
My problem with that motion is we just heard a case an hour ago where there was no recommendation from staff, and you just put that in your recommendation. I don't think that was, maybe you need to reword it or do something, because if you approve one and turn down another one for the same reason, we can't do that.
But there are different facts.
Different facts and figures.
Well.
Did you go visit the site?
Yes. Let's hear your recommendation again, maybe I didn't hear it correctly.
I made a motion to deny it.
Yes, but I'm.
One of my main concerns is the road. That road is very sandy, it's all sugar sand, it is. The other gentleman, if you want to talk about the other case, which we shouldn't, but I will, he said he would pave that road. That would be a great asset to the community on Smith Lane.
I, I agree wholeheartedly, anytime they wanna pay something, it's, it's much better.
Okay.
But I, I think when we, if you, you made the motion saying we were turning it down because it didn't meet the requirements.
There were several issues that were identified.
Yes, but we, we passed the one for the same reason an hour ago. That's my, that's my only problem with it, I mean.
The one an hour ago, that, that was a fish camp in the 1960s.
That's a historical year.
That's been there forever. It just, it changed owners, and however they had it set up, it disappeared.
I would feel much better if you made your motion without saying because of it doesn't meet.
I'm not gonna change it.
That's, that's the reason we have that it's supposed to be there.
It's only a recommendation to the county commission, you can vote against me or for me or whatever, it don't matter, I just, that's just my feeling, that's why we made a motion and a second to have more discussion.
Well, I discussed it. I have a, I have a problem with that, I, I can't vote yes for one thing and no for another under the same, for the same reasoning. Now, the conditions I, I might go along with, but not, not the way it was stated.
Well, we have a responsibility to judge things against the comp plan and the LDC.
I have no problem with that. But that's not what the motion was. The motion, the motion didn't mention anything except that it didn't meet the comp plan. And the other, the other one that we passed, that motion was the same thing, it didn't meet the comp plan, but we still passed it.
It had met the comp plan.
No, it doesn't.
It had.
Well, we didn't, I don't even know if we had a comp plan, but I know we didn't.
Yeah, we did. Yeah, we did. Basically, the, the one before was reactivating a fish camp.
And I'm a wholeheartedly in favor of that.
And that was prior use being brought back.
I have no problem.
And prior use was, fell within the comp plan at the time. But it ceased operation, and it was inoperative for 240 days. So it was deemed inactive, and they had to do another comp, another application.
It was inactive for 12 years, I mean, that's made over 240 days.
Yeah, but the 240 days is the benchmark.
Is what's in there, yes.
So.
I, I agree with everything you're saying, but my problem is the consistency. I mean, I, I don't wanna, I don't wanna make the same motion and passes one time and doesn't pass the next time.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Madam Chair, would you please mention ex parte communications and conflict of interest?
Yes, sir, I certainly will. Has anyone had ex parte communication with anyone concerning this site?
Nope.
Does anyone have a conflict of interest concerning this site? Okay, thank you. Anything else? Thank you, Mr. Perry. Anything else anyone would like to say? I've got, I've got a motion and a second on the floor, and if no one has anything else you'd like to add from the Board, I'm gonna call for the vote.
To me, the application was incomplete and inconsistent in areas. Like I said, it has, it has things in there about events, and it just, it needed more details for me to vote for it.
Okay. I'm not gonna put you on the spot and call you by name, but if you have anything else, it's the time to say it.
Madam Chair, person. The only real objection I have on this whole thing is the road condition. We're talking about bringing in vehicles on a road that almost everybody who got up and said, "The road is really a terrible road, it's sand." Whether it meets certain conditions or not, there's a lot of complaints about it, but the man got up and explained, and his wife explained what they were trying to do. And it sounds good on 35 acres. And I don't think he's gonna have riffraff in there, but the problem is getting vehicles in and getting vehicles out, and what's it gonna do to the traffic in the area? And my concern is, basically, with a lot of fire experience in my past, God forbid you ever have a fire vehicle go down that road in an emergency when you have paid people on a piece of property. There's a lot of liability there, and we as responsible to make a recommendation to the county commission. Just on the road alone, to put a commercial establishment that deep into a piece of property is against the grain, as far as I'm concerned. I can, there really wasn't many other complaints in there that I objected to. Whether it meets our conditions or not, I understand, we didn't have a recommendation. But 35 acres is a lot of land to put 10 units on. But it, like you said, the PUD can be expanded at a later date, and we don't really have a provision to prevent that from happening. Once you issue the PUD, it's open, and it can be revised at a later date. Now, if there was a time certain or a limitation on what can be used on in that piece of property, I would not be against it, provided the road condition is improved, to where we don't have any liability on that road.
And this was set, the only date was time certain was 2030, when it would be completed by?
I got another comment.
Okay, Mr. Hafner.
I think what was just pointed out supported my comments earlier. If you look at the plan that we've been presented today, it far exceeds the 10 units that we're talking about. I mean, I'm counting, I'm counting almost 20 units and about 14 tents. So that, that's kind of where I'm coming from. I see this thing just literally expanding. I think it can expand even, even without coming back and asking for a modification to the, to the PUD until somebody complains about it. So from that perspective, you know, maybe you guys could add that to your motion.
On the, the other thing is, the site plan that we've been presented is far more than what has been verbally talked about. And when you have an inconsistency like that, it really does raise a red flag for me, because you're on paper saying you can do one thing, but you verbally say you can do another, and what do you base any kind of regulation on, or any kind of oversight on? So when you've got the, the site plan that is in the program, that's much wider than what has been discussed today. So I think there needs to be consistency between what is being presented audibly and verbally, and what is being presented as part of a site plan, because they don't go together. And that is, that is an inconsistency on the part of the applicant. Anything else? Okay, I'm gonna call for the vote, and it's gonna be a roll call vote. Mr. DeSantis? Mr. Schwing?
So, the motion is to deny.
Voting no to deny it.
The motion is to.
Because I think there's another way of handling it. I think that this petition would agree to table this thing, bring it back with a more revised plan, a more acceptable, there aren't all these loose ends, maybe it shouldn't be a PUD. I don't know that answer, but I'd hate to deny something where people are trying to improve an area.
Mm-hmm.
When we really don't have any real, there are some worries, I agree.
Mm-hmm.
But if they could be corrected, is there a better way to handle it than just refuse it and send it up? They've already spent a lot of money to get it to this stage. Unfortunately, the presentation didn't match what the sincere thought on that piece of property that they want really is.
Mm-hmm.
And when you read the proposal and you saw all of these different things that could happen.
We gotta have a motion on the floor, we gotta.
I understand that.
Either that motion has to be withdrawn, or we deny that motion, and then come back and you can table it if you want to do that.
Madam Chair. I'll vote no on refusing the recommendation, because I would rather see it go a different way.
Mr. Helms?
Can you clarify the motion for me to make sure, when he voted, I didn't think he was on track in what he was voting for, so can you clarify the motion and then call for a roll call with the vote, please, ma'am?
Yes, sir. The motion was to deny the application, vote to deny it, or recommend to deny it, because it does not fit with the goals and objectives of the comp plan and the Land Development Code. Is that correct, Mr. Froelich?
Yes.
So that was the motion. The motion was to deny.
I pass.
Pardon?
No vote.
Well, a no vote is a no.
Okay, put it down that way, but I, leave it as a no then. I would rather not refuse this, this amendment, but it's gonna go that way, so I don't wanna vote to put it down, so my no vote stands.
Okay, no. Mr. Schwing?
I think I'm agreeing with what he said, but I'm not positive.
Work on that for me.
I don't agree with the motion.
Well, then you vote no.
All right, I'll vote no then.
Mr. Hafner?
I wanna vote to deny it, deny the application.
So that's a yes.
And that's a yes, okay, yes.
Ms. Fortner?
Yes.
Mr. Froelich?
Yes.
Mr. Hodges?
Yes.
Hodge?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. So the motion passes. It will be heard by the Board of County Commissioners, there will be two hearings, the first being on January the 9th. Don't know when the second one will be, whether it's two weeks, or four weeks, or six weeks, but they don't wanna hear six cases in one day, and that's why we're splitting them up. So at this time, we're sending a recommendation to the county commissioners to deny this application.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Just for the record, commission members cannot refuse to vote, or pass on a vote. So if they didn't vote.
You can't abstain?
You can't abstain.
Well, Mr., you can't abstain.
We've done that several times.
Well.
But that was under a different attorney. You used to vote.
Read it just a little while ago, that you just.
No, you voted, though.
I concur with you, I mean, I just.
But you did vote, both of you did vote, they both voted no.
We voted, but it didn't count.
We go on to, does anyone have any old business they'd like to discuss? Does anyone have any new business they'd like to discuss? I only have one thing, Mr. Helms, can you give us an update on the Land Development Code revision?
I asked that question, I didn't get a good answer.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. So we, it is in the process, it is, we are working with an outside resource to help us with that, and so if there's recommendations that the Board would like to put in there or see in there, it's gonna come before you guys again, but again, we're still taking recommendations from the B.O.C.C., from admin, to, to work with the outside resource to get that information. And so we are diligent working on it. We haven't done anything this week, but it is diligently, we are sending things out, we will have something to you guys as soon as possible, because we want it done as, as soon as you guys do, so.
Right, I can understand that. Okay, I need a motion concerning the minutes. Do we approve, or do we?
I'll make a motion, we approve the minutes of last year.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from the meeting in October, and I'll call for the question. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Chair votes aye. Okay, well, that means I get to sign my name on the minutes. We can do that, if I can find them.
We didn't meet last month, I was gonna say, it's different.
We didn't meet in November. What's coming up, what's coming up next month?
I'll give you one, when you talked about they don't like to hear too much at one time, we had a tax sale today with two properties, next month, we got 136.
Madam Chair.
Holy moly. What's coming up next month, Zach?
Right now, we have two rezones on, on the books.
Okay. And can you explain, do we expect to see the one that was pulled, do we expect to see that coming back? We're not adjourned yet, sit down. Okay, go potty.
Madam Chair, so we, the, the applicant for Hog Island has withdrawn the application, no refund has been issued, but we're not currently working on that project. We do have a meeting scheduled with that applicant to see how they would like to change. We have no details on what they wanna change yet.
Okay. But you think they will be coming back with changes?
I mean, it's up in the air right now, I mean, I can tell you, the PUD right now that is encumbering the lands is gonna prevent any sort of development.
Okay. All righty, thank you very much, this meeting is now adjourned.